Good afternoon. Welcome to the Monday, January 27th County Commissioners Meeting. Before Commissioner Shale leads us into invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance, I'd like to take a moment of silence for the tragedy that happened last week in Nashville, Tennessee, for the children that lost their life. And so just take a moment of silence, please, and then Commissioner Shale lead us off.
Commissioner Shale, those of you that would like to join me. Our most gracious Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come together as a free people. Father, as I look around, I see members of the county's departments, and I see a lot of citizens. Be with us, Father. Guide us, strengthen us, and help us, Fathers, to make the decisions from this board that would enhance the lives of all of our citizens. Father, we give thanks to you, for we see so much ugliness that we fail to take the time to look at the beauty that you have surrounded us with. Thank you, Father, for it is in Jesus' precious name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Shale. We'll start off with recognition. Dr. Slate's in the back. Dr. Slate, would you stand? And if you would, introduce your new school board members. I don't know who all is in attendance, so they can stand for recognition, please.
We have our new chairman, Mr. Nick Jarvis. There's not a new board member. We have our vice chair, Heather Yates Davis, and new board member, Mr. Murray DeYoung.
All right, nice to have you all here. And for everybody that asks, me and Heather Yates is no kin, so go ahead and get that out in the public. All right, Ms. Hares, do we have a chamber member here? It's you. Oh, well, no wonder it had your name there. Glad to have you at the meeting. Recognition of veterans, Mr. McClure.
If we have any veterans here, would you please stand? We'd like to recognize those folks. Now, if you haven't received one of Davidson County's veterans' pens, come forward and we'll give you one. Don't be bashful.
I'm working on it.
So, all right.
Thank you for your service, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
Right there, yep.
Thank you, sir.
There you go. Oop. Thank you much.
Thank you for your service.
You OK?
All right, thank you very much. Adoption of the agenda, I'm sorry. Anybody wanting to register for public address, it's right here. So please make your way up to sign for public address. I'm sorry, Ms. Watford does have a recognition that we added to the agenda, so if you'll lead that off, please.
Thank you, Chairman. I received the sweetest little note that's got some personal parts to it, but it's from a friend in the senior services area, Jim Weichel, and he has a check that he wanted to be presented tonight in honor of Doug Duffy, who has worked for many, many years for Davidson County in the senior services department. And Tisha, I want you to come up and receive the check as well, and perhaps if you have some additional information you want to share about Doug, that'd be great. So come on up while I'm finishing. And this is also in honor of each commissioner as well, so I wanted to share that with you all. He believes that Doug's role at senior services has made Tisha's job much more pleasant and the work easier, and it's also made a great deal of success for senior services. So he says, "Best wishes for health and smiles in this year." So, thank you, Tisha.
Doug was here earlier. See you out here, man? I seen him earlier.
Oh, you probably dropped the deposit. That's where he's at.
If you want to say something.
Say in the microphone. Thank you very much, Mr. Duffy, for the donation. It's kind.
Yes, we'll definitely thank Jim for that donation. Doug is retiring Friday after 18 years of employment with the county. He's very excited to be retiring, but sad, on the other hand, so it's bittersweet for him. But he has been our financial specialist for senior services since he came in 18 years ago. I'm not going to do the math, 18 years ago, but we will definitely miss him. We have hired Lisa Smith. She was with Public Works and then moved to the Human Resources Department, and then now she's going to be with senior services as our financial specialist. So Doug has spent this last month training her, and we think that she's going to really be good. She has some huge shoes to fill, that's for sure, but we will definitely miss Doug, and he's done an amazing job with senior services.
Thank you.
We hate to see him go, but we wish him well in his retirement. All right, adoption of the agenda. Mr. Martin has asked that a closed session for economic development be added to, oh, removed from the agenda. That's not good news. OK. All right. Any other changes?
No, sir.
Here, none? Can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This is myself.
Motion, second. Mr. McClure.
I know it's been a long time since I've been here, but you'll recognize my voice.
I recognize your voice. I just knew the other one came from that end of the bed.
We had all in favor. Any opposed? All right, that motion carries. Public address, Mr. Martin, do we have anybody?
We have one thing. Listen, I'll give you. Fine, no more questions.
We've got a whole list. Kobe Flamen?
How are you?
This afternoon.
I'm good. Good evening. Um, here's a concern, grandparent of Davidson County. I reached out and spoke to many of you about the concerns about the implementation of the AI safety controls in our schools. Many parents and citizens alike, including myself, have voiced concerns and collectively put together a list of questions for both the Board and the Education, Board of Education and Commissioners. Many are here to speak, so I'll be brief. I would like to focus on why I believe there is so much friction between the public and the Davidson County Boards. I've not spoken publicly to either Board until recently and was extremely disappointed in the initial responses, although some of you reacted admirably. Others immediately challenged that I was providing misinformation. In other words, I did not know what I was talking about. Please understand that seeking clarification from the Board of Education does not constitute spreading misinformation. The special meeting that was fast-tracked last Tuesday night left me thinking that not only I need clarification, but so did the Board of Education. I reached out and spoke to both Senators Steve Jarvis and Richie Simmons. Steve Jarvis gave me some of the reasons the implementation had to be delayed, and we discussed how to disseminate as much information as possible to the public. He concurred that it would be difficult to explain by email and preferred speaking directly to many people that had requested information. I suggested strongly that a public town hall forum would be an excellent means to move this initiative along. I told him I was going to submit it to the Board for consideration. Richie contacted me when he received that request, and I indicated to him the same thing. He gave me further understanding of what law enforcement was hoping to accomplish with the system. I reiterated my reasoning, suggesting that since the topic was so complex that they could hold a town hall meeting, so to open up the forum for questions and answers. That suggestion was submitted to the Board of Education, and to date, it's not been received or response from any of the Board of Education on that topic. In conclusion, I think the new Board of Education members have been put on a timeline to vote this system onto approval without providing the public with an explanation. The on to approval without providing the public with an explanation that should be provided. I would ask that the Board of Education and the Board of Commissioners consider a better means to disseminate information rather than going on to defense every time a citizen requests further information. It is my belief that we all want our schools to provide better education for our children, a safer environment, better managed, and adequately funded. The Davidson County School Board's decisions of past years have not adequately supported that belief. The parents and citizens of Davidson County are not going to accept anything less from our new school board.
Three minutes, sir.
You can go ahead and finish this a little bit. We'll just give you a few more.
And are looking for the Board of Education and the Board of Commissioners to embrace input from the public for a common goal, a better Davidson County school system and a better Davidson County overall. I hope I can count on you and the school board. I look forward to getting a response. Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Fosman?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, my name is Richard Fosman. I graduated from Midway Elementary School and North Davidson High School. I went on to North Carolina State University, where I earned a degree in electrical engineering. And as you can plainly see, I accomplished every bit of that last week. So I mean it when I tell you that I love Davidson County and I love its public school system, because without the great teachers who touched my young life, I would not be where I am today. First, let me thank all of you for your public service, and I hope you don't mind my saying that present company excluded. Given today's political class around this country, as a private citizen, I can tell you that even though my...even the thought of my need to seek political office invokes an overwhelming desire to take a shower. But Benjamin Rush, one of our founding fathers, said, "It is important not only to defend our constitutional rights, but also to assert our constitutional rights." He went on to say that "Amour patrie," the love of our country, is both a moral and religious duty. When it comes to problem solving, I've always told my people that if they come to me with a problem, they are welcome to whine and complain about the problem, but they had better come to my office with a solution in hand. So it's with that in mind that I come here with two concrete solutions and one symbolic solution to the controversy we now face. Number one, the short-term solution, and that is to have our senator and our senate go back to work and ratify modifications to Senate Bill 382 in order to create clear guardrails that protect students and parents relative to the AI security system pilot project granted to the Davidson County and New Hanover County schools, making it a crime for the vendor or anyone else to go outside these protective parameters. Number two, the long-term solution. This would involve the state legislature to memorialize those protective guardrails into permanent law, again, making it a crime to go outside these protective parameters. And finally, the symbolic solution, and that's where I believe you, as commissioners, can play a very positive role. I would ask that this commission take a stand by passing a strong resolution, urging the Davidson County School Board not to vote on approval of the AI security pilot project until either the short-term legislation or the long-term legislation I've just mentioned has been put into place. Unfortunately, this commission is fundamentally powerless to pass an ordinance that would put in place those needed guardrails, because schools are under the purview of our state legislature. However, you do have the ability to send a clear message by passing a resolution declaring that you are on the right side of history by standing with our students and their parents, grandparents, and guardians, who are ultimately the ones charged with their children's care and protection. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Richard. Polly Leonard?
Been a while, but I'm back. So, seems like this weekend was a very heavy situation of a collaborated, conglomerated attack and to chastise any citizen who decides to speak out and have questions. And yes, Chris, this is directed solely at you.
Oh, I know it.
Okay. Well, look, you told me out here you couldn't respond, so we'll just keep that, okay? You attempted to tell me here in the hallway that you wanted to extend your apologies to me, and I was very quick to tell you that that's an absolute no, but you were welcome to do it on Facebook Live, so you can garner your 10,600 views of you chastising me with me utilizing my constitutional rights. And then I reviewed all of your credentials. Nowhere did I see that you were an AI security specialist. So just as it was brought up on social media again this past week with a Tonya, that since no one who's speaking on the matter has any credentials or works in that profession, has no business speaking on it, where do you get off coming on Facebook Live and chastising constituents in the manner in which you did?
I didn't mention a constituent or your name. Do I have a constitutional right of freedom of speech?
Well, don't we?
Yeah.
As you come to the social media to express misinformation and lies that were spread about.
Polly, if you can, go ahead and address the board, please.
Twenty twenty taught us that fact-checkers were sent out to disseminate what was really truthful, and that's what you did. You come out to the social media to disseminate what was really truth and make the rest of us citizens look like we're liars. I don't appreciate it at all. We brought forth clear facts and evidence in black and white with many questions. The whole situation, you guys have said many times that you guys are separate entities, but yet you state in your Facebook Live that you work in lockstep. So I'm gonna need for you to do it clear and concise. Are you separate entities or do you work in lockstep? Because that's really the misinformation that's been put out there. But you made it very clear that constituents will be chastised if we go against.
Alright, excuse me. No clapping, please. Dave Hash, is that right?
Dawn.
Dawn Hash, I'm sorry, yep.
That's okay. I'm okay with that. You know, my name is Dawn Hash, and thank you for allowing me to speak, gentlemen, ladies. I am here because I am against this AI. It is not ripe at this moment for us to trust. And we have been digging in, and I want you to know, I have a file here of everything that I've done my due diligence for. If I open up some of their documentation, I want you to know why I'm extremely concerned, and I went word by word, line by line. If we're going to use an executive summary and we talk about what they will do and what they won't do, weapons detection, and then they put in here excludes explosive detection. Well, that's a no for me. That's a no for me, because they're selling us a bunch of can't deliver. Perimeter intrusion detection, smoke fire detection, and by the way, their disclaimer is detection of visible smoke only. That's a no for me, especially the money we're spending. Person down detection, suspicious interactive behavior. What is...what's the qualifier for that? I mean, I need more information on that. Although they are saying it's just for a few of the schools, but in on page three on sites, it definitely says implemented... DCS is advanced of implosion services, including eight high schools, six middle schools, eighteen elementary schools, and five additional sites. This tells me that it's gonna be shoved down our throat. This also leads, and I have looked it all over, if they cannot deliver on actual visual of the weapons, including bombs or anything else, I would highly suggest that you, as commonsensical, highly intelligent men and women, understand that if you're gonna be lockstep with the school board, we all need to be on the same page. This is actually a police state. Our children will be tracked and traced. I looked at this. It's all global, all global. So God's bringing us out of Egypt, but you're looking back and wanna be attached to it. And this is not, whether you're Democrat or Republican, this has to do with do we want a police state and do we want our children to grow up knowing that this is a police state and you cannot use your constitutional rights? I don't want any child not be able to go home. I want the teachers to be safe. I want everybody, including the lunch ladies, to be safe. But if this is not proven, why do we want to test it on our children? Why do we want our children to be the test subject? We saw that during COVID. Our children haven't gotten over that yet. Why do we want them to be put into fear? More fear, more fear. And by the way, I have sent multiple, multiple emails. I'm still waiting for answers, complete answers, and I'm very articulate when I ask the question.
Three minutes, ma'am.
I ask you to understand, come Jesus, come, we've been waiting so long.
Thank you. John Cox?
Good evening. So my name is John Cox. I'm an independent agent for 3D Response Systems for school safety. We are not AI. I was asked to come here as an alternative. 3D Response System is a holistic and comprehensive initiative designed to empower staff and students to reclaim their schools from a threat of violence. Our team specializes in creating tailored safety systems for each school building, assuring that every area is equipped with essential cover, concealment, and communications for those who are innocent. We don't just enhance safety for individuals and support police responses. We also offer dedicated mental health prevention team and expert consultation for managing any incident. It's important to acknowledge that the past efforts to safeguard schools have proven ineffective. For instance, cameras primarily serve as evidence collectors and do not provide real security. Visitor management systems prioritize daily operations over security. Technology such as metal detectors, AI gun detectors, facial recognition, and shot detection systems have...they will issue alerts or may issue alerts, but they fall short to equip individuals with the vital resources needed to cover concealment and communication during a crisis. This raises a critical question. If an alert occurs, what are the next steps? Just today, an article was sent to me by our marketing team, and the article from the Tennessean paper stated that experts say these AI systems are flawed and do not pick up concealed weapons and that AI failed to detect the shooter's weapon at Antioch High School last week. We recognize the system is complex and it's nearly impossible to capture all this in three minutes. The best way to understand our system is compare it to a fire suppression system. Multiple layers are tactically designed to focus on response, but not for different kinds...or but for different kinds of threats. Consider this. When a police officer is involved in shooting, they have access to cover, concealment, and communication. Their chance of survival exceeds eighty-five percent. Conversely, without any of these, their survival rate is seventeen percent. Our staff and students face significant risk every day in schools due to the lack of adequate protection. 3D Response is the only initiative focused on the true stakeholders, providing the powerful tools necessary to keep them safe. It's time for an effective change in school safety, and we are leading the way. I would like to leave you with some pamphlets before I leave tonight. I also encourage you to visit our website, 3deresponse.com, to help you make an informed decision. We are currently installed in both public and private schools in Minnesota and have introduced legislation in multiple states.
Three minutes, sir.
Okay.
I'll give you about thirty seconds.
In the upcoming session, they look forward to both funding the language and make the system a law for educational buildings.
Thank you. If you've got any material, you can give it to Jason there, and he can give it to us later. Thank you very much. Rhonda Langford?
We don't even have proof that it's even gonna do any good. There's the proof, what happened this past week in Tennessee. So why do we...why are we pushing for this to go through so bad? That is my question. Why is it...sure, we might lose the money. It's not really our money, anyway. I thought that money was supposed to go to the flood people, victims for their schools, trying to rebuild and help them. What do we need it for? Is it gonna cost all that money? Is there not gonna be some of this going on? Somewhere, that money's gonna be gone somewhere beside our schools. We need some money in our schools to help these kids that were speaking of COVID when they were speaking of COVID, that never got the proper learning, who can't even comprehend their reading now, and they're failing and they're being... Push through school, push through school. They're not even failing their grades. What happened to the teachers that were helping teachers those years? We did have teachers that would tutor them. Not everybody can afford $25 or $30 for thirty minutes to have your kids tutored, and they still don't learn no more than they did. Also, Chris, you're stating that, you know, on Facebook, on your message, that the facial recognition, oh, it ain't on there. It don't say it's gonna have to be on there. Well, all the information that we have looked up and looked at, and even this man right here just presented to y'all, it is on there. And if you do not go with that, you don't get the grant money. So which is it? Do we not have a right to ask about that to each other? It don't have to be here, does it? So you can't...you know, that was very unprofessional, I felt, as a commissioner, to get on there, you know. It was kinda downing all of us that were asking.
I thought my statement was, "I don't support facial recognition."
Nope, you said, "I'm not gonna do that."
Go back and look at the video. I don't support it.
This is my time. Do I not still have a little bit of time left on two minutes? Thank you, sir, very much. You know, which is it? Why can't we have metal detectors? Would that not be cheaper? Officers already there, right? We got SOR officers. What are they gonna do? Drink coffee, shoot crap with the teachers? They're there already. Let them check these kids in. They don't need to be taught. They already feel like a prison now. They can't go to the bathroom, because we've got all these houses in development, and that's another story, and they can't even go to the bathroom. I mean, they're told they can't go to the bathroom, because they don't have enough mechanics. They walk through the halls.
Three minutes, ma'am.
I'll give you thirty more seconds, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. They walk through the halls already. If somebody did have a knife, how they...if this ain't gonna detect it, you know, they could have a knife instead of a gun, walk up behind a kid they're mad at, a girl, and stab them. God forbid. I hope that does not happen. But, you know, so which is it then? Is it, you know, you said, "Y'all don't have anything to do with the school board," correct? That's what you said, okay? But yet you talked to the school board two years ago about this same system, so which is it? That's wishy-washy. So what are we supposed to believe? We're supposed to believe that y'all gonna tell us, you're not, you know, I'm a concerned grandmother, you're not gonna go with the AI, because it's not gonna have facial recognition. Baloney! How can any of us believe anything you say? Any of you. I mean, if you wish...if you're that wishy-washy. So I just don't understand, you know, and then I certainly don't understand, and I think it's disrespectful real fast, that one time, in how many years y'all had to stay over your time limit because people were talking, we pay y'all salary, correct? We vote y'all in, correct? So why do you have to throw a fit and make us have only a few seconds to talk? And if it wasn't for Fred McClure, who has always done right, why does everybody think he has been on this board as long as he has? Because the citizens respect him, because he's always been honest, and he will speak up for us, as he did then at that meeting, which I missed it, but still, as he did then. And we got thirty minutes, which is better than nothing, but still, how would you like to stand here and talk three minutes? Or, and another thing, sit there and be looking around, you know, instead of looking at us talk? That's disrespectful, too, at the school board meetings in here. So if you could find it in your heart to just try to come up with another plan and stuff. If we lose the money, big deal. Or get the money and give it to the people at the schools up there. You can do that.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Alright. Um, all right.
Good evening. I'd like to thank all of y'all for hearing my concerns this evening. Um, my husband and I were foster parents with Davidson County for two years. Um, I want to first say that we had a good experience with three social workers out of this, out of this whole thing. My husband and I never knew that it would be so heartbreaking at times in this journey, but we realized that it was difficult because of the Department of Social Services. Poor communication with social workers, backstabbing, talking about other social workers coming from social workers to foster parents to guardians, being lied to straight to our faces by the department, learning that confidential information does not apply to social workers themselves, and to learning that social workers made a burn book about other social workers and foster parents, and they got absolutely nothing done about it. More than anything else, the children that are in foster care are treated as a number and not a person. However, as foster parents, we are ridiculed, not only by the biological parents on occasions that personally think that we're trying to steal their children, but we're also ridiculed by the department. I have even text messages telling me, be careful of what you say because you might risk your adoption of your children. So many foster parents do not know which way to turn. I even have a previous, previous social worker that made an anonymous statement to me that she wanted me to read, and it said, the licensing and placement department do not work well together, that a lot of them were childish and unprofessional, that within the department itself, you have different divisions not working together for the good of the children, and that they do not even have the money to get a child a meal. They could not spend over ten dollars to feed a child in their care. A lot of social workers were taking money out of their own pockets to pay for these children to eat. Within our county, confidentiality does not apply to social workers. A social worker disclosed information that he was handling of one of my children's adoptions to an unknown party, and it got back to me. The National Association of Social Workers Ethics in Section 1.07, privacy and confidentiality, social workers should protect the confidentiality, all information obtained in the course of professional services, except for compelling professional reasons. It also states that social workers should not disclose confidential information to a third party unless clients have authorized such disclosure. Social workers shall reveal confidential information to others only if informed consent in the client, except in those circumstances in which do not violate the other laws. At what point is it okay for confidential information by a social worker not deemed to have punishment within the system itself? We can't give out personal information, why should they? I even have him recorded admitting to me that he did it, and nothing happened to this man, and now he works for the GAO department. What worse can happen? You moved him as a social worker to now speak for children after he gives out private information. I sent an email about it.
Thirty more seconds. Ma'am, Deb, will you keep up with this, please?
Chris, I'd like to appreciate your response. You responded to the, to my phone call within five minutes, but the response I got back was not appropriate. The last meeting that we had, we discussed misappropriation of funds, and some of y'all know me because you've seen me on the news. My children that I adopted, there wasn't misappropriation of funds, Todd. I'm not, please let me finish.
Okay.
Thirty seconds, sir.
Go ahead, she wants to finish. Give her fifteen more seconds.
In the time that my children were in my care for two years in foster care, eighteen thousand five hundred and forty-four dollars cannot be explained to me of where it went. They got that for death benefits from their father. That's theirs. It's not the county's. Surely, no one wants this to happen to your child or your youth that are already traumatized by merely being in foster care, let alone the foster families that we, as a state, are desperately trying to need to house and care for them. We have to put a law and what society demands above all else of our friendships, our allegiances, and our alliances, because you're a wonderful position that you can collect all the resources and people with compassion and passion about what they do, and you can move this county. You can do something like that. You're in a position of power to do that, but you're also in a position of servitude. And if you do not consider everything that we have to say, and you take these issues that maybe you're passionate about and do something with it, then you have wasted the time of the people that spent getting you in these positions.
All right, thank you, ma'am. I've, I've gave you time, okay? Thank you.
Sarah Lee, family integrity advocate, eighty-three Gibbs Road, Lillington, North Carolina. I am a daughter of the American Revolutionary. My ancestor dropped his hammer and picked up a gun because the government would not listen, and so that is kind of what I'm doing, but without the gun. I came here several years ago and warned y'all. I said there are lawsuits that are coming to, uh, North Carolina counties, and it's because we're not making a change. We're not committing to that change. We're not finding solutions from the people who are hurt by the system, and we are not stopping the, I can do everything by myself, and we're not saying, hey, let's do this together, because together, many hands make light work. I need this county, because this county is now under fire from a lawsuit that another case that I'm involved in is, is under. I need this county to hold a public forum regarding child welfare. I need this county to add all the people that have interest in it, social workers, guardian of items, fosters, biological parents, relatives, um, social services board director. I need you all in one room to talk about things and have those different interests come together and have somebody from each interest represented to go over and address the, the past and current lawsuits that are going on and the solutions that were derived from them. Currently, the lawsuit, um, against the state is trying to seek a change, not necessarily monetary value, but I'm the advocate that will come back and Hogan v. Cherokee you. I will make sure that you have not a single penny in your account coffers to spend on anything in this county, because I will, I will literally bankrupt you by gathering parents together and suing the heck out of you. But I don't want to do that, because we have to function. We have families that need that funding applied to their, um, their social issues. We, they need you to be the ones to step up and, you know, commandeer all that. They need you. They're, they voted you in, so they need you. So I don't want to do that. But I came here years ago to tell you what was coming, and you didn't listen. So my alternative to not getting your community together and speaking out and talking about the reality of what's going on in child welfare, that's, that's my, my gentle warning, is that needs to be addressed, and I'm willing to help with that. I'm willing, as an advocate, to go out and meet families, boots on the ground. I'm willing to support your social workers, guardian of items, your foster parents. I'm willing to do the work. So what I'm suggesting is something that Harnett County is being proposed before they, um, file a dismissal motion for the lawsuit. I'm, I've got a project called Step Up and Step Back, where we all step up together, and the government steps just back just a little bit so that we can all address the issue and have safer families in our communities. Your weakest family in this community is the strongest you will ever be as a community. And what does that look like? What does that weakest family look like? Are they homeless? Are they hungry? Are they dealing with school issues, bullying? Are they dealing with being separated because DSS separates families versus, we're working in a model of severance versus, versus service? What does that look like? I want to empower you because my ancestors, too, were judges and soldiers. They loved their country, and they loved serving it. So that's in me as well, but that, that will come. So I wanna, I wanna encourage you guys, but also warn you, because now's the hour to do something about it, and you have so many people out here willing to do it. You just need to use their help. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Nick Jarvis?
Let you know over at thirty minutes.
I'm sorry?
Over at thirty minutes.
I'm on, go ahead and, uh, take him, and then we'll roll on if the board don't have an issue with that. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you, guys, for having me tonight, and I appreciate you guys being here and all you do. Um, I just want to touch on a few things tonight. First of all, the timeline of this, uh, in our January sixth meeting, um, it was proposed that Mr. Jarvis's House Bill 259, uh, the AI grant, be looked at for approval, um, in that we, as we looked at it, we felt we had a lot of questions that we still didn't have answers to as the new board. Uh, we had three new members coming on, uh, obviously, myself moving into a chair seat was not privy to some of the previous information, um, and we felt like we needed more info. At that point, there was a motion made, um, to move that to an already scheduled January twenty-first meeting for discussion. I have that on recording. If you'd like to hear it, I can email it to each one of you. Uh, it was not for vote, it was for discussion, along with the calendar, um, survey that we had sent out to parents, uh, in an effort to be transparent and to share information with them, because we did, you know, we heard words like facial recognition and information being stored. I have two daughters in our system, a seven-year-old and a fourteen-year-old, um, and facial recognition is a nonstarter for all of us, uh, the entire board. Um, I know you guys feel the same way. Uh, and the other thing was storing data, right? Data can be breached. We see that Power School is a global entity that was just breached and a ton of information taken. So it was very important for us that both of those things were met before we even discussed it further. And that leads me to where we are now. I come out of my daughter's volleyball tournament, uh, and I had a voicemail from Mr. Kester. Um, his voicemail, I have it saved as well, uh, stated, um, that him and many of you on the board do not, many of you are against AI and do not want AI in our schools. Mr. Kester, I didn't know that you spoke for the entire board or for each one of them. But since you do, I think we have a solution. I request that you make a motion tonight, since you care so much about school safety, I request that you make a motion to use the two-point-two million that has been moved out of the decreased funding balance for debt services that has been placed into county contingency in order to fund a new jail. Take those funds and make a motion to approve thirty-eight new members, one per school, that can sit and monitor our nine-hundred cameras that we currently have in place. Along with that motion, I ask that you make another motion.
I'll give you thirty seconds. Like to rest, and, uh, Mr. Kester will address this later after public address, and hopefully you can come back up.
So, so let me finish. Along with that motion, that we hire fourteen new SROs to ensure that we have an SRO at every school. I will take something from Mr. Fossmann's, um, Moms of Liberty, a statement that I found that said that eighty-eight percent of juveniles arrested can't read at grade level. So, with that being said, having SROs in our school, having someone monitoring those is an alternative solution. You have two-point-two million there that you're gonna put into our jails, so we can continue to build bigger jails or we can fund our schools. Todd, I know that based off of our conversation Sunday, when we talked for a long time, that I think that you're under the impression you could, there's still a lot out there. You could take it or leave it, is kind of how you said to me, as long as the county doesn't have to fund it. That was an MO you required.
I said there's answers that need to be, questions that need to be answered.
Your thing was, the biggest thing you were worried about was the fiscal responsibility and that the county would not have to fund this when the two years were up.
That's one of them.
A couple of points I want to make. Last year, an individual died at Ledford Middle School, sitting at the entrance steps. Our kids coming in unbeknownst to basketball practice for an early morning practice with their coach, walked up to a dead body, a corpse laying there at their school. Two things about that. One, had this software been in place, when that person sat down and overdosed right then, it would have alerted the proper people. If there was a responding officer within distance, maybe they could have got there and saved that individual's life with Narcan. Second piece to that, if they couldn't have, at least we would have been aware so that our kids that are walking in at six-thirty in the morning to go to basketball practice wouldn't have had to walk up to a dead body sitting at the front steps. Second point to this, last, two weeks ago, I believe, folks broke in to Churchland Elementary, stole basically around ten thousand dollars' worth of, um, laptops. Later, we come in over the weekend, find it. By the time we go to the video, we're days behind at this point, right? Mr. Simmons has put out stuff, they're trying to find those folks. Had this been in place, that would have been alerted on demand when they were breaking in, and we could have had someone there as they walked out and escorted them straight to jail and got our equipment back. The last thing that I want to touch on, there's documents floating around, there's documents floating around today that you guys make a hundred-and-thirty-three thousand dollars a year, between a hundred-and-thirty-three and a hundred-and-seventy thousand. Bear with me for one moment, Mr. Elliott. Bear with me one moment. Now, interestingly enough, that public document from your, you guys' website, from y'all's website, once it was brought up, has now been changed, part of it, but they didn't realize there's a vice chair and a chairman piece still on there of commissioners that still highlights that fund as an eighty-nine grade pay rate from one-thirty-three to one-seventy. I say all that to say, I know you guys don't make a hundred-and-thirty-three to a hundred-and-seventy thousand dollars a year, right? We understand.
Come look at my house. Go look at my truck.
We, we understand that, right? I, I understand that, that you guys don't make that kind of money, pennies compared to that kind of money. My point to that is, Mr. Kester, you have shared document after document saying that the scope of work that we are requesting does not include facial, our part does not include facial recognition, it does not include stored data. The scope of work is what we are piloting, not what Mr. Jarvis's bill offers or has to offer. And I say that because this document is out there, and you've told me on multiple occasions that what's on this paper is government document, this has gotta be real, and you have called Mr. Jar, insinuated, Mr. Jarvis is a liar, Richie Simmons is a liar, I'm a liar, our entire board is a liar, because you have a document. Well, I have a document now that says you make a hundred-and-thirty-three thousand dollars a year that come from your website on public document paper. So are you lying? Is Casey lying? I know the answer to that. The answer is no. We're here to work with you guys. We do want to be close to lock, key, and step.
If you want to work with us, uh, we'll have questions here in a minute. Your time's up. You can come up when we open the subject matter up and, uh, answer some questions, and we'll all be good. Thank you. Yep. All right. Let's move it on through. Item for consent, uh, is there any changes to the consent agenda?
Saying, uh, Mr. Chairman, I make the motion we approve the consent agenda as read.
Got to make a motion to approve, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Consent agenda passes. We'll move on to item number eight, A, Appointment Planning Committee for Aging Services. I'm sorry?
Yeah, yeah.
It says eight.
That's mine says eight.
Mine does, too. Is that wrong on the thing?
Oh, it's on there.
When I do, when we, when we take something off, it changes in there.
I would go.
Okay. My eyes ain't that bad yet. Uh, Vice Chairman Watford, you want to lead this off for the appointments?
We went back to the, uh, committee, and our committee was happy with Rebecca Moser. I've already called her and told her and invited her to come to our next aging meeting, so I thank you for your support of Rebecca Moser. She does a lot with senior services, and so, um, she was just delighted to hear from me, and I, I know she's gonna be a good worker, so thank you all.
Is she a new?
Excuse me.
The newest one that we talked about last, last week.
So we had an appointment, we need to do that, correct? So is that the only one?
That's the only one.
Okay. Do we have a motion to appoint, um?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
That, that matter passes. So now we'll get into, uh, Davidson County School Pilot Program, and what this meeting is about tonight is for us to get a few answers. Just so y'all know, the school board acts independently of the county commissioners, and we are needed when funding is needed, so that's our role in this, and in the end of the day, we don't make a decision for the school board. Uh, with that said, we would like to work with them and make sure the right decision is made on this, because school safety is a very important, uh, subject to everybody up here. I have two grandkids, uh, one in elementary school and one that won't be long going into elementary school, so when I see what hap- So when I see what happens in, um, Nashville, Tennessee, it's very close to my heart and I don't wanna see it happen here. With that being said, I serve on the Facility Committee, and we've looked at several different safety, uh, systems to go in some of our schools. And we hadn't seen any yet, um, that I feel that gives us anything but, uh, false positives, I guess, me and Mr. Kester talked about yesterday. That's probably a good word for it. I've done a lot of research on this AI, uh, that is in the school system's, uh, windshield right now that they're looking at. I have some very concerning questions, and I hope they can answer them, because I think the rest of my board members feel that they would be concerning as well. So that's where this is gonna lead off, but I do hope we can have a good relationship with the Davidson County School Board's members, because our children's future is at risk here. So with that being said, I don't know who wants to start off with questions or answers. One of the concerns we have is who's gonna pay for this once the state decides they don't wanna pay for it. But before we even get there, there's so many other concerns that I may have, that I ain't even so sure we're gonna get to the cost part, but we may. Uh, but again, I want the taxpayers to know, even though this money comes out of Raleigh, it's still taxpayers' money. So whether it's spent in Raleigh or whether it comes here to be spent. So with that said, uh, who would like to lead this off?
I, I, could I say one thing, Mr. Chairman? I'm sorry, the commissioners, uh, Kester can go forward, but I had a couple of members of the community send me some questions on Facebook Messenger. If I could make copies of that or get our IT folks to make copies of that, could we submit that to the minutes? That way the, I assured these citizens that couldn't make this, that one of them is a digital engineer. He's against it. But he had some, some pretty detailed questions that he would like answered.
We discussed that not long ago, Casey. How was we gonna handle some of these folks that wanted to try to...
We've got, I lied, I lied to, to her.
We've got Mr. Hall on the line from the company Evident. So the way I kinda vision this is, and we got multiple components to this, so at your places, you've got the excerpt of House Senate Bill three-eighty-two. And I just printed the page with this on there. It was a long, rather long bill. Um, I'm sure either most people in the room, most of you all have already seen that by now. You've got, it explains the, the premise of the program, the three million dollars for New Hanover County, two mi- or two million dollars for us, what's going to be proposed as part of the solution and the performance capabilities and when it's all gonna happen. So again, all that's in that bill. The other document you've got next to you is the memorandum, memorandum of understanding that I had Adam draft last week, and I've submitted it to the school board as well, to their attorneys. So hopefully the school board can get a copy of this soon, take a look at it with Dr. Slate. That does outline the piece that the chairman spoke of at the onset about the cost. You know, there's the, the system itself concerns and the technology and discussing that, and then there's a piece about the cost. The, the plan is for the state to pick this up, and I think rightfully so, that some of, some of you all's concerns were about what if? What if it doesn't? What if things change? This document sets in motion the, the idea that, that the local school board would not come back to us for that potential what if, should it not happen at the state level? And that's, it's relatively very simple. Now, the technology pieces, I can't speak to that too well. Um, I don't know much about the system, and I don't know if the school board can either. So I invited Mr. Sean Hall from the company Evident to join us via Zoom, and I figured if you got any technological questions, it might be better to ask him. Um, and then we kinda play it that way and see where we go.
So is, you ready to ask him some questions? The technical guy on the phone, uh, is he there? Is he on the phone?
I haven't got, I have not logged in yet. I can go ahead and do that.
So I guess we can start off asking him questions. Anybody that has questions?
Oh, waiting on him. I have a question.
Okay.
Why is it in the legislation, and I'll read, the participating public school units shall contract with the same vendor for the pilot program?
I'm sorry, Nick, can you hear it? Can y'all hear Rebecca now?
Why is it in the legislation that the participating public school units shall contract with the same vendor for the pilot program? The vendor shall be determined by the first public school unit to enter into a contract for a sa- school safety solutions. Why are they removing that option from our, our, our local school system? Can anybody answer that?
I guess I would be for, yeah, come on, come on, come on up if that's...
Nick, if you know the answer to that, come on up, because I don't. I can't figure out the, the logic behind that.
Whoever's gonna answer the question, I guess. So the question is, how does one school system get to pick the system for both school systems? And why does that, um...
So we did, Mr., uh, Chairman Yates, so the, uh, initial legislation, uh, when we first met with Senator Jarvis, um, and we looked at, uh, the parameters of the legislation, we, uh, expressed to him that we needed to put out an RFQ, uh, to figure out who we wanted to go with. We put out an RFQ. Three companies applied, two that met the qualifications. Um, and then after reviewing that, uh, the legislation was revised with Evident coming out as who the state recommended, and the state said we should go with, so us and New Hanover.
Excuse me, one second. I don't mean to interrupt you, but...
No worries.
Have you read this bill?
I have.
Okay. It says, "The participating public school units shall contract with the same vendor for the pilot program."
Which is evident.
So it's telling both of y'all that you have to contract with one. The vendor shall be determined by the first public school unit, so would that be you or New Hanover?
Well, right now it's us, 'cause New Hanover was a little slow in the process. They had, they had, well, they were slow in the process, 'cause they didn't have a superintendent, so let's be very transparent here.
You, are you saying that the board is incapable of making a decision without a superintendent?
No, sir.
Well, I didn't understand, so what, what are you saying then?
This is New Hanover now.
New Hanover County. I'm saying they didn't have a superintendent to spearhead, that their administration was in flux. So they had just terminated the previous superintendent, and so they were in the process of hiring an interim. We were already on board moving at that point in time with this program.
New Hanover is not a participant in this?
They will be. That, I spoke with their interim superintendent today.
The reason Evident is not here tonight like they were at our last meeting is 'cause they're at New Hanover tonight. And they're getting the same information from the questions that we had before.
And just to be clear, I spoke with Mr. Kester, Mr. Yates. I invited both of you to that twenty-first meeting to have...
Yeah, I, I couldn't make it to that meeting. That's not. I do have another, I, I do have another question. Excuse me. We'll get to you in a second. Um, and I'll let you speak in a minute, all you want, okay? Um, do you find it unusual that y'all would be picking a security system for a school that's two-hundred mile away?
We're not, I know. I never thought about that, to be truthful. I focused just on Davidson County.
Would New Hanover County, are they good with the fact that another school system's picking their security system that's from over two-hundred mile away?
I'll be truthful with you, Mr. Gates. That's not my problem.
Well, I just...
My problem is focusing on Davidson County schools.
I kinda find that unusual, though, because what may be best for you or what may be best for them may not be best for you, and y'all haven't even discussed it between the school systems.
I don't even think that's really relative, because we gave them two RFQs. We had two different programs, um, entitled and listed for that. And then from there, Steve Jarvis chose Evident.
Now, I'm just saying, is it unusual that someone would make somebody use the same system in both places?
Same contracts? Absolutely. If they've budgeted the same pricing, if it's the state pricing, which is my understanding, because the expectation is to fund this across the state, and, and that is gonna be at a state contract pricing, just like we buy paint from one place and across the state, right? Or because it's under a state contract, so it's no different.
I don't think this is state contract, but we'll check on that.
But are you, are you okay, Nick, with the state taking over your responsibility and your rights?
What, what are they taking over?
Well, you, you're mandated to take the state provider. And there's several providers out there that you guys could put, put out for and try to get a, an accurate quote and talk, interview them and say which one you like the best, and the state's taking that away from you. You, are you okay with that? I'm, 'cause I'm not. I think local government's been depleted on a daily basis of what you can do on behalf of the people, and you feel, you're feeling the pressure from the people, a- and I'm gonna be honest with you, it's nothing but a clear extortion, because I owe the money.
Keep, keep it down, please. Keep it down. Thank you.
I don't, I don't disagree with you, and that's why I made the motion for Mr. Kester to transfer those two-point-two million into, from a jail to supply SRO officers and someone to run through those numbers, and we don't have to have this system.
Well, the problem comes down to who wrote this bill. Y'all don't have any, any justice over the bill that's been presented to you and put in the lap. Neither do us, un- unless we convey what we're conveying right now in a public meeting, and, uh,
There are grants that we write for and things that we try to do, i.e. the Golden Leaf Foundation grant where we're building a welding facility at South Davidson High School. Those are things that we push out. This was pushed into us from the state level and said, here's what you have. You're exactly right. We don't have to take it. We can't turn it down.
But you shouldn't have to turn it down. It should, you should be able to do it the right way, and, and to...
Have you spoken to Mr. Jarvis about that?
Well, I've spoken to Jarvis and, and Potts and Sam about government intrusion for, uh, many, on many items, not just this one, but on many items. And you talked about a while ago, about standing together, you, we need to stand together. But we need to stand together on this, uh, extortion of dollars, so that we can all work toward the agenda. And you can, you can shake it off, but you tell me what else it is. You either do what I want you to do or you're not getting the money. Now, what do you call that?
Please, please keep the applauding down, okay? Thank you. I get it. You're emotional and it's, it's good, but keep it down, please.
So in, in...
If it costs two-point-two million dollars to keep kids safe, then why aren't y'all willing to cough up some money?
You didn't even know it was tax dollars.
I did know it was tax dollars, absolutely.
You sent an email what tax dollars it was.
I said it wasn't directly related to Davidson County tax dollars. It is all related to tax dollars.
Ma'am, just so you know, we have looked at safety issues for the school system for a while. Now, I would suggest we do like we do a lot of other things. We put a couple board commissioners with the school board members, and we look at different programs and we decide as a whole what's best for the county, okay?
Absolutely, absolutely.
That's what, that's what we have done a lo- everything since I've been here, that's the way we've done it, okay? You're new, you're new, but every time we got a capital expenditure like this, we, we want every kid. This is just for Davidson County schools that you're looking at. We got Thomasville and we got Lexington. So we gotta make sure every child in this county's safe, so...
And I, I think what spearheaded this, a couple of years back, we had some issues at the schools. We had some, some deaths outside of the state that was fairly close to here. And at that point in time, we had a, another law enforcement officer that was here that, that actually was patrol, and James brought up a lot of good things, if y'all can remember that. He said, "There's some, there's some technologies out there that can automatically lock doors and detect guns and metal detectors and stuff like that." Um, necessarily things that might not be mentioned in here that I think would be beneficial, but we, that's where I thought all this came from, is because kinda Steve and the board kinda tasked the legislature to move forward with something. And we get this back, and I, I, I do agree with Steve that, you know, the, the legislature should not tell you, uh, what vendor you should be able to choose, because they can't speak for all of our constituents. Uh, we don't know if our constituents is for this, against this, whatever, so having these open public forums, I, I get it. So they have tried to tell us what to do before, and I don't think they have that opinion to tell our citizens that, that manually we gotta shove something down their throat when they don't have the right to, you know, appease that.
This is working hand in hand, as you mentioned a moment ago, Mr. Yates. You know, Casey reached out about us getting together this past week and talking through some of this, right? I showed up, Casey showed up. You were supposed to be there and you weren't able to make it. So you didn't come to the twenty-first meeting. You didn't make that meeting, but you're wanting us to bar candidates.
I got a lot of things going on, okay? I, I wear many hats, okay? But let me tell you something. This system that's gonna protect our kids is not something you make in a week or a month, okay? I've been looking at this, and I can tell you, this system here, and we'll get the gentleman on the phone, it's flawed, okay? So if you can't see that it's flawed with your own eyes, then we'll have another discussion after that. But this is what we work with, and this is why we have a committee, because I have done a lot of research. I always do a lot of research. And we'll see in a minute, but anything that a child can put a, a gun in their coat and they never detect it until it gets in the inside of a school building, then it's not what we need. It's false, it's...
That's called child safety.
Yeah.
Uh, take somebody's mind. That's called child safety.
I'm not gonna try to push something on the public here that gives them false hope that their child's protected, okay? We've looked at city elections, some stuff they brought, it would not work. It would not keep their kids safe, okay? Now, I think we can find something that can make them safe, but it ain't gonna be something y'all can try to make us do if we're paying for it. Now, I don't wanna see the state pay for it with our tax dollars either, because I'd rather them send this money here and let us spend it the way we see fit to spend it. The school board and the county, together, like we always have. So anyhow, uh, go ahead.
I just wanna address a few little mischaracterizations that Mr. Jarvis and I communicated, trying to open up dialogue, foster communication. I've got a lot of constituents here that, that trust and rely on me to protect not only their safety, but their liberty. And when you get some of these bills, like, like the chairman's talking about, that force this down our throat at the state level, I'm not gonna do, I mean, I'll look at this, and my constituents are asking me, "Well, Tripp, do you have a copy of the bill?" The very thing I sent you, the very thing I sent a lot of my constituents. It's in the bill right here. It says, "In order to get that grant, you have to accept these provisions." A lot of us can sit out there and say, "I don't want it," but if you truly don't want it, the way to demonstrate that to the people of this county is you return this garbage back to the legislature, have them remove the contentious provisions that the people of this county don't want, bring us back a clean bill, and heck yeah, I'll support that if it protects my kids. But I'm not gonna be mischaracterized as lying and un-Christian and spreading false information, Mr. Jarvis, because that is not true.
May I ask, may I ask, say something?
Go ahead.
It's my understanding that at the sheriff's office, you guys are currently using this similar type software, uh, as well. So if you're against it, you work for the sheriff's department, correct, Mr. Kester?
That was stuff put in place, just like stuff that was being mentioned about this budget. I've been a sitting commissioner for two months. A lot of this stuff you're mentioning is wrong to even suggest that I have any. I, I've not even seen any of that stuff done before my tenure.
At the sheriff's department that you work in?
Some of that stuff. I don't work down there on sixty-four. I work at the courthouse. I don't know what kinda procedures that, I'm not, I'm a corporal. I'm not included in the sheriff's decision-making process.
Any AI software in the courthouse?
You'd have to ask somebody else more in charge of that. I couldn't tell you.
Is there AI in the stuff in the, does anybody know? Is there AI at the county courthouse?
I have no idea.
It is on my phone. It is on a cell phone.
But, but I do know one thing. There was AI technology in Nashville, Tennessee the other day, and it didn't work.
Absolutely. I heard.
It didn't work.
Mr. Chairman, on, on that specific topic, I want, I like to use the analogy of Ford and Chevy. And we can clap about, you know, ours is not gonna work, because theirs didn't work. If they had a recall on the Ford, doesn't mean our Chevy's gonna have a recall. We can be negative ahead of time. All we can do is research, and we find out the facts, and facts have been spread in fact-like. And the, the thing that our chairman was talking about is Facebook has spread a lot of lies.
I got you.
I've got about twenty emails myself, and all but one of them was about facial recognition. We don't want it. You're pushing facial recognition on, and we've proven over and over and over that that's not the case. It's, it's in the original bill is what I keep hearing from folks, and I understand it. I, I like the feedback from the public. However, you can't go with false information, because we've proved that not only is facial recognition not gonna be used, if it ever in the future gets used, we have policy going in place to where we have to be the one to vote it in.
Have you, have you read the revised bill?
I have read the revised.
Okay, it's in a revised bill that, uh, facial forensic, uh, is in there.
Are you in the scope of work?
Right.
Yes, I am. I am. But, 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 but let me, let me go back. I wanna answer his question.
Not on the review.
Let, excuse me. We'll take care of this, ma'am. I, I do have one question. They did put a new security system in Nashville this weekend. Did you know that?
Didn't know that.
Okay. They put new security system in this weekend, so that oughta tell you something.
Was that evident in Tennessee?
I'm sorry?
Was that evident in Tennessee?
No, it was the same technology.
I'm saying it, AI is a broad spectrum, so...
Same technology.
Same, same type of technology. Same, same type of technology. If you haven't given evidence, the evidence of wrongdoing, then that's apples to oranges than what we're talking about here tonight.
But I'm just looking at technology, okay? When you can put a gun, and that's what he did, in his coat and walk in the school and walk all the way through the lunchroom with it. And pull it out and kill one person, he could've killed ten.
I'm not arguing that.
So, so it's, it's technology, let me finish, will you? It's technology that didn't work, okay? And like I say, Ms. Yates, I want you to know that child safety is very important to me, okay? I think every board member up here knows that child safety is important to us all, so don't. You can't come up here and say if y'all spending money and if you do this. I don't wanna waste money, okay? I'm not a money waster.
And SRO needs schools to waste?
Uh, no, I don't think so.
Well, that's, that's what I was gonna talk about. If we were gonna do our job, we'd have had an SRO at every school. With a gun on the side and we probably let some of the teachers wear a gun, you know, and, and you wouldn't have none of this mess.
But no, I, I disagree with that because SRO can't be everywhere at one time, okay?
They can't.
Well, I ain't even talking about Cam's, what if he's at the other end of the school or on wing three and it happens over here? You know, I would suggest probably we all get together and try to come up with a system. I've read about a couple, there's one at the Panther Stadium, whether it'll work or not, I don't know.
Is it AI?
Uh, it's AI and metal detection together.
Who's gonna pay for it? If we're not gonna even think about paying two million dollars to keep our kids safe and the community gets upset with maybe what we're gonna do there. Then who's gonna pay for something that will have all the bells and whistles? Don't you think metal detectors, don't you think all this other stuff that we need to keep these kids safe is gonna be expensive? Yes, but are the kids worth it? Ads a dag gum lootly they are. So if we wanna have a.
Who, who are you saying ain't gonna pay for it, Mr. Elliott?
Are you gonna pay two million dollars for something you believe in?
Sure.
Okay, would you put that in writing?
Sure.
Okay.
I mean, I am, I'm, I'm one vote, okay?
That's right. My, my thing is this, we've turned down SROs before. They've asked, Richie's coming asked to have.
But SROs don't work in every instance, you know?
That's fine and dandy, but it's better than something, it's better than nothing, you know?
Maybe.
But.
Yes, ma'am.
And our, um effort to be um visible to our teachers and to our staff have been at multiple schools. And I've walked in the halls and asked our employees, and what they want is to be supported with more individuals in those schools. I've watched many of them walk out of a, of an elementary school to have to go address a violent kid at the middle school because there's nobody there to cover it. And that's unfortunate because we see, we are, we, as in Murr and I, are in there when that happens. And if there's not enough SROs to deal with a violent kid, to deal with the suspension, then that's what we're listening to. We're listening to the, the staff's safety, to the, to the school's safety issues that are, that are present. We can't, we can't put more SRO officers in there because we don't have the funding for it. And if we're really worried about kids' safety, whether it be the autistic kid that's having a meltdown that the SRO has a connection with, that was, that happened.
And, and I, and I hear you, okay? City of Thomasville High School, you'd have to have six SROs over there because they so many different buildings. So, you know, it, it becomes.
North Davidson has fifty six entrances. I, we just went to Walburg and they have twenty seven entrances. Those are so, there's so many concerns in that and that's what we're worried about.
Many members want safety, everyone say they want safety. You tell us not to take this two million dollars or force them to do something different, but you don't wanna give us the money either, so we're, we're stuck between a rock and a.
No, no, you're not stuck because this is the first time we had the conversation. How long you been a chairman?
Yeah.
Okay. Have you ever talked to us about safety in the school? How, how long you?
I called you the immedi-, I called you immediately and we spoke for thirty five.
I'm talking about, how long you've, have you been a, a school board member?
Uh, two years.
Have you ever called me about safety at the school?
Actually, we have.
No, you hadn't, no, you hadn't.
Yeah, we actually have.
No, no, you hadn't.
Yeah, we have.
So.
Mr. Chairman, there, there's just one thing. It, all this talk about SROs or AI, these are all tools in the arsenal. So why would we say no to more arsenal tools for safety for the kids?
Because if you're gonna spend two million dollars or four million dollars on something that don't work, you.
There's another thirty eight SROs at, at.
Well, I don't know. One of the schools she's talking about's got twenty six doors, so do you need twenty six SROs over there?
The SRO is one tool, but along with the AI or other types of metal detectors and all these other types of things, grow the arsenal for safety.
And, and I hear you, okay? So let, let's, here's where we probably need to start. Thomasville needs a sit at the table, a seat at the table, Lexington and Davidson County and a couple commissioners. To set at the table and try to figure out safety for the schools. Because again, if we protect Davidson County, we still have two other school systems. You know, those are our children too to protect.
Oh, hardly agree with it.
Well, that's, um, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Just real quickly, and I may be going, maybe sounding like something it's not, okay? So don't take this the wrong way. I heard you mention the staff. Or the parents in all this. How many p- parents have you talked to?
I'm a physician assistant and I talk to parents every single day and they're equally.
Have you talked to the parents, met with the parents and talked to them about this? Don't sway the issue. Have you, yes or no? Have you, yes or no? Yeah, have you, yes or no?
No, I have not talked to.
Okay, and I'm not faulting you, so don't think that I am. It's just that it seems like that we're trying to reach a conclusion without, without a viable. Part to the, to the equipment.
So one thing that we did with the, with the calendar, right, we wanted our parents to be heard and so what we did was we sent out a survey, right? And it was overwhelmingly supportive in one manner, that, in one manner that they're looking, that they want, the parents. They highlighted where they were, what they were. So let me ask you a question. We put this out to the parents, we do a survey and it comes back overwhelmingly supportive and they want this in their schools. Are you gonna stand up there and then still say, oh, no, we're not gonna do it? Are you gonna then support it? If the pa-, if we do a survey and the parents overwhelmingly support it, will you support it?
I have to trust the survey, number one.
You gotta have the facts out there.
And, and number, number two, Nick, if, why, why survey? What are you guys doing standing here tonight? Why don't you allow the parents to get up there and say what they wanna say in front of you without you cutting them off?
In, in lieu of a survey?
Yeah.
Michelle, we, we posted on uh the school's website, right?
Correct.
The school's website, the same as he's talking about the uh calendar survey. We posted on the school website and we've got, like I just said, me personally, I've gotten about twenty emails. And that survey was seven thousand responses. So it's posted the exact same way.
Mm-hmm.
On what school?
So.
Was it on AI? Right, was it on AI?
Yeah, that's for the calendar.
Are you doing the posting?
No, that was on.
The posting was on.
Yes, it is.
Excuse me, excuse me, excuse me, let's, let's keep it up here and thank y'all in the audience. I get it, it's a big concern, but let's, let's discuss here. We got uh somebody here that wants to speak and asked a question and then we'll work our way down and uh. I, I do have some questions too, so. And, and, and you know, Ms. Yates, you seem really defensive and I hate that because I don't, I don't want us to be. Okay, I'm sorry, Ms. Davis, okay? Excuse me. You can call me Todd, okay, or. Okay, okay. Um, so anyhow, but like I say, I, I don't want us to be defensive at each other. We're gonna try to work together, okay? I mean, this is a very important issue, so. See, you already starting off being. Alright, go ahead.
Thank you. If you'll bear with me, I'm sure I'll have a statement and some, some questions as well. I would like to preface um that. You, you know, we, our opinions span a, a spectrum here tonight and that's okay. For some of y'all who have read the bill, and I've read it multiple times now as well, it's uh certainly one of, of brevity, which is rare. Um, coming from politicians, but because it's so concise. It leaves open questions and, and some ambiguity. And you naturally have questions that, that follow. Totally fine, I had questions too. Um, I have spent uh this week, obviously I've talked to um Nick Jarvis, I've talked to Senator uh Steve Jarvis, who also sits on. Uh, the IT Committee and is well versed in the bill. I was on with uh the sheriff before uh coming up here. I would like to kind of note that there's obviously the bill that again, everyone's kind of talking about. There's also the, the scope of work, which is what would be executed against. And obviously if you were to depart uh from that scope of work. Uh if, if Evident or again whoever's kind of overseeing it would depart, there would be legal ramifications. Um, now within the bill itself, I know a lot have focused on the list, right, the, the threatening object detection, the intruder detection. The facial recognition. Um, what precedes that is the proposed school safety solution must offer. Must offer another, so again, a verb, put my teacher hat on here, um as in make available. You, you don't have to use it. We have multiple pieces of technology that have facial recognition that we don't use. Uh, and as much as, you know, we, we may not like it in this day and age. We do live in a hyper-globalized information tech savvy age. If you make phone calls, if you send text messages, if you send an image over a phone, if you're on social media, your kids are on social media. If you've done any kind of business online, that data's tracked. It, it's not all encrypted, right? Someone, somewhere, a company somewhere is housing that information. Um, so again, I understand the concern though when we're talking about our students. I also, as a former school teacher, wanna make sure, you know, we leave no rock overturned. That we look at all possible options. Commissioner Elliott was uh, you know, he said that we wanna make sure, you know, expenses really shouldn't be uh all that important when it comes to safety. Agree, and I will add, we need to make sure that whatever we do is efficient. And is speedy in terms of interaction time. That is one of the things with AI. So I'll try to paint the picture here. If I'm again, an officer in a room surrounded by forty or fifty camera screens. Chances are, because I'm a human, I may miss something. And even if we were to add the thirty plus SRO officers, they wouldn't be able to make up for what an AI can do. I've worked a little bit with AI in, in pharmaceuticals. Um, they just, their ability to take in data. Thousands and thousands of pictures and render a judgment is extremely quick. It is not something that we have. We're again, human, we have delayed response times. So there is a benefit. Now, are there, I don't, I, I can't speak if there's other school systems in other states. That may be used facial recognition. Obviously, that's not in the scope of work here. If it was to be used, it would be in my mind, and again, I'm not, no expert, but I know a little bit about it. It would be external facing, right? So an AI would pull that logic, that algorithm, which is being fed information. That information has to come from somewhere. Where would it come from? It would come from some kind of data repository. So maybe it would be, you would have a data repository of human traffickers, gangs, people who shouldn't be stepping on a school property. That's what it would be identifying and looking for. We currently use cameras now in the schools, right? So kids are on them, teachers are on them, staff's on them, parents are on them if they come in. What this would seek to do is to be preemptive. So instead of using video as some sort of post-analysis after the fact. We would preemptively try to stop some of these threats from happening. Now, and, and to the chairman's point, there, there's no, there's no silver bullet. There's no perfect platform out there that's going to, to keep everything and anything from happening. And it's sad, um, but that's, that's the world we live in. Um, I, when I was talking with uh Senator Jarvis earlier, he did mention, and I don't know where he got the, the research, I think, was. In ninety some percent of the cases where some kind of weapon is brought to school. Ninety percent of the time, that person shows that weapon at some point prior to getting into like the classroom hallway. Right? So it's coming out of the car, it's coming out as they're entering the school. Again, with this kind of uh AI sort of ability. You would be able to again, zero in on that much quicker than if you're one person looking at forty some screens. Again, are there concerns? Do we need to kind of look into it and make sure the data's being secure and it doesn't get um, you know, taken advantage of? Of course. And one reason why it's two million dollars, I know it's kind of a big, you know, price point, part of it is because it's not cloud-based. Cloud-based is, is not very, uh, it, it's, it's less secure. This would be set on individual servers in schools. So you're using a much more secure system to house the information anyways. And, yep, I think that's good. That's what I've got. So I, again, I think we should be open to it. Um, you're gonna see more and more of it. And if we can, I'd rather us have it in place to protect students, to protect teachers and staff. Than someone else using it to do something wrong.
Former fire, uh, uh, army veteran, police officer, excuse me. Former police officer, army veteran, firearms instructor, I've seen it all. I guarantee you, I can put my gun in my, my, my. Appendices right now and I can walk in Letherton Hospital. All of a sudden, as a veteran, if I have PTSD, that day, I said, okay, PTSD just kicked in. And I'm already in the school. Guess what I can do as a firearms instructor? I teach concealed carry and I teach all types of firearms. And I have gone through multiple types of firearms training. As a veteran, police officer and everything else.
That'd be dangerous.
Okay, so challenge me, I can do it. You're saying that it's gonna detect the firearms on the outside, some of them they wanna access, see it? No, I'm gonna, I, I utilize my firearm inside my car. It's not gonna detect, it's not gonna detect. I guarantee you, I can get in my school because they know who I am. I've been around the school system for over seventeen years, eleven, okay? Um, so there's, there's some things that, you know, you're saying that I, it's very flawed. I used to work also in the corporate world. Due to type, data capture, mic, micro ink on the checks. There's a failure rate, user failure rates on not detecting micro ink on the check. It goes, same thing with AI. There is a flaw percentage. So maybe instead of all the politicians and all this stuff, talk to the law enforcement officers, let them be part of the town hall meetings and everything else. And maybe we can get some answers here. I'm tired of hearing about it.
Thank you, sir.
I disagree with it.
And, and I agree with some of that. If we could get a committee together, we gotta get a committee together with the right people on it that, that does know some of this stuff.
I'm the sheriff.
Sir, I, I promise, you know, we.
Last, last word I have to say. I'm Sherry's husband, she's in Jamaica giving, trying to build, do stuff for Jamaicans on a mission trip. She wanted to be here. I have, I'm not speaking for her, okay? This is just me, Alan Coons, okay? I'm not speaking for her. Make that clear.
Okay, alright, um.
Karen.
Chris Simmons couldn't be here tonight, but he did send representatives there to speak on this also. And he spoke on the twenty first regarding that as an expert.
Just a couple of things. It just, it seems to me, and this is what I've observed, we're passionate, we're passionate about what we do, what each of us individually do. And then how we, how we view things certainly are different. But we all, I think we all have the same uh idea in mind that we wanna protect the kids. And we don't wanna see anything else as bad as what we've seen in the past year, two years or whatever. It seems to me we've got some great ideas together. This is what we need to think about uh as we, as we talk to. Kind of like in this open session that we have, which I think is great. Uh, a lot of my questions about having, about you all voting on it because number one. I believe in the school board and the school board making their decisions as a school board and I'm, I believe in us, you know, making decisions. But I think we're all about the county and our kids. Um, and I think we all agree on that. Um, but it seems like we've got two or three things for us to focus on. First of all, I have a lot of questions about how it works and I don't think we know how it works. And maybe if we had some more answers about how it works and see the positives versus the negatives of how it works. And I think this is, this guy talking to him and maybe having another session of where we learn about it. Um, you know, it all sounds good on the outside, but there's several things on here, you know, and I made lists. Uh, that I can't even pull up at the moment, but uh I, I wanna know how it works. I'm one of those kind of persons, you know? Uh, I, I used to try to teach um how to diagram a sentence and that was hard to teach. But it was just as easy as pie for me to see how this works on this and how this hooks to this and it all made sense. But I can't tell because there, the details are not here in the information that they've given y'all, nor for us. And, and I think we're focusing maybe on some things that we need to just know more details about and then. And secondly, I wanna, I wanna say this and as, as a former teacher. Uh, we had days and I, and these are the kinds of days that frustrated me and I'm sure there's two sides to this. Uh, assistant principal comes. Uh, assistant principal comes to me as department chair and says, uh, we've got, uh, eight thousand dollars. We just found out about it. Okay, listen to that part. We just found out about it. You have to get your English teachers to decide what y'all would like to have and get it to us by this afternoon. And if you don't, it goes back to the state, okay? That always bugged me. That always made me angry because I would have told them what I wanted had I had time to do some research on things that would really help me in my schoolwork. Most of the time, I didn't give them any answers because I wasn't going to spend the money personally for myself just because it might go back to the state. So anyway, I think being quick about it is not good either. I want answers, I want detailed answers about how it works because it might have some elements about it that really do help thirty percent or forty percent. Is that something that we should say no to, you know? I don't know. But I'd lo-, we've heard, let's get together and have some, some meetings. If you get too many people on a board, you got, you know, it needs to be a, a, a small group of people that works together. I'd, I'd be all about that. Uh, again, that's my, that's my commentary at the moment.
Ms. Wofford, can I, uh, that one thing that you mentioned about that information flow?
Yes.
Um, this isn't something that, I keep hearing, uh, folks saying we're rushing it. This started, uh, in two thousand twenty-three, and then the school system had a team. Uh, Blake Davis-Chris was the head of that team.
Okay.
And, um, information flow has been going all along with the people on that committee.
Yeah.
And so it, bugs were worked out, and then when it came to us on, I believe it's the first January, January sixth.
Started actually on December.
It, December's when we became aware, and we started doing our due diligence. But then when it came up for the December, or, uh, January sixth, the first thing is we pumped the brakes because we felt like a lot of people do, is I need more information.
I do.
So at that point, evidence was brought in, the, the subject matter expert, which I wish was here tonight.
They're on the, they're on here.
Got you. But, but that was presented, and that's what I was mentioning about giving the public the same access that we had at that, that meeting with all evidence, uh, experience and question answering. And then, uh, of course, Sheriff Simmons put his, uh, and kind of like a few bits and pieces that he felt that it would be a good arsenal addition, like we spoke about before. But in addition to evidence, I, I, I don't know where it needs to stop. At what point, we're talking a year and a half, almost, something like that. So at, at some point, we have to trust the process, like-
Okay, I, I got a question for you. I hear you. Um, has any of your board members seen this system in action?
We have not.
Yes, we have. It was at, uh, um, it was at the Olympics. So evidence, evidence, um, did the security for the Olympics.
Have, have you seen this system now? You talk about jails. I'm on the jail committee, unfortunately, okay? Uh, Ms., Ms. Watford is. We've been to about five different jails, okay? So I guess one of my problems, I told Casey today, one of my problems is I ask a lot of questions, so. That's what the people vote me in for, to ask questions and to know what I'm buying and know what I'm spending their money on. So I'm, I'm full of a lot of questions, so.
Mr. Chairman, I think we ought to ask the city of Thomasville and the city of Lexington because all the cameras going down each main street have that facial recognition. James told me at one point in time, you couldn't pick up a penny in Thomasville without them knowing who you were and what you were doing. I think you could do the same thing in the city of Lexington. So, uh, it's, it's been around.
Well, there's no doubt it's been around.
It might be, I don't know how we got here.
But anyhow, let me, let me finish my questions. I hadn't finished mine, okay?
I'm just trying to let you know.
What I would recommend, and of course, like I say, city Lexington brought some, some security stuff. I don't know how that, I don't remember how it worked, Casey, but we told them to get their security information together because they was concerned after one of the shootings. So we asked all the school systems to, to get something together and bring it in front of us. And what Lexington brought, we'd done our homework on, and it just wasn't, the juice wasn't worth the squeeze, you know? And, um, so anyhow, um, so it'd be right, my recommendations, if I sit on this committee that went and looked for a security system with some school board members and some, some people, police officers, and maybe a couple of school teachers, maybe not too many, like she said, because you get too many, you get too many inputs and you never get anywhere, okay? And we've done a lot of good things in this county, and we've done it with good people. So we know how to put the good people together. But I would never spend this kind of money without going somewhere and seeing the system in place and how it worked and how it, you know, not just one, because the salesman's going to send you to the one that they want you to go to. I, I buy my own equipment too, so I kindly know how that works. Salesmen, they're trying to sell you something. So you gotta go to two or three different locations and catch them by surprise, so. Anyhow, that was one of my questions. So none of y'all have been to a school system that is using this technology?
Are there, are there any in North Carolina? Did we not?
I have.
Can we talk to, to see?
I, I will get to him in a minute when I get through with my questions, um.
Well, you had, I thought maybe he could answer your question.
Have, have y'all talked to anybody, any school systems that are using this information?
We would be a pilot, so that's why there's not an order.
In another state, in another state, they said there's a hundred schools using this, is what I read. So surely there's a telephone you can pick up and call somebody and-
So, no, we have not had that conversation.
Okay, let me mark this off my question list, okay? I'm sorry. All right, um, are they upfitting all of the schools for this security?
Initially, you will have three schools. You'll have Tyro Middle School, Central Davidson High School, and Wahlberg Elementary School. Three different levels, three different sizes. And then ultimately, after, uh, the initial pilot with those three schools, then it would be outfitted to the rest.
Okay, so it's not going to be outfitted originally?
No, sir.
Okay, now, seen in the work order, it said it was going to be-
It will be, but we start with the first three, and then we report back to the general assembly on what's going on. Are there any bugs? Are there any things that we need to work out? Are there any issues? And then we move and expand that scope of work, like it says, and, uh, to Mr. Mizell's point, we expand that scope of work to where it's fully, uh, fully implemented.
So they're just going to come in and put the equipment, I'm going to call the equipment, in three schools, and that's it?
Well, there'll be, there'll be training and professional development in those key pieces.
Right.
Yes.
Uh, any idea, and I asked Mr. Jarvis this, and he, he didn't know. And of course, I asked him the same thing. I said, can you call some of these other school systems that's using it, a hundred school systems, and find out what the extended cost is? Um, so have y'all asked that question? What's the extended cost after two years or three years now? What Mr. Jarvis told me was, Senator Jarvis, I'm sorry, that the state was going to pay for it. And that's what I heard. But again, our concern is the state is always going to pay for things till it's time for us to pay for it. But anyhow, so have y'all looked at the extended cost and what the subscriptions are? Can you tell me that cost?
We have asked, and evidence, well, they're right there on the screen. Um, they didn't, I don't think they fully defined on what that would be as a scope of work, um, as my recollection in our twenty-first meeting, um, so.
But, but, but would you say that you couldn't vote in the affirmative for something until you knew that cost? Would you, in other words, I'm trying to ask that question. Um, would you vote for something of this magnitude without knowing the future cost? Would, would-
Here's the way, we don't even know if it's going to work.
Right, but I'm saying, yeah.
Right. That's just a pilot. That's what a pilot does.
Yeah.
It helps us understand.
The beta test.
It, it, you know, that's what Mr. Simmons, our sheriff shared with us on the twenty-first, was that if it's not working, that, you know, I trust him to come to us. I respect Mr. Simmons. He makes a decision to possibly lay down his life every day for our kids, right? He's going to be the first one, the first ones in our school. He felt like it was a tool that they could use. He said it may come back in six months to a year and it not work at all, and they'll tell us that. I mean, that's what that-
Okay. Well, with that being said, would you not want to know the cost before you even tried this out? Because it may work great, and then they may say it's ten million dollars a year to keep it in place, and you've done sign the contract for them to come in and put it in.
We answered that question.
So to me, you would-
There's a finite date to it, though. That is one thing. We, we do need to know the future costs, but at the end of that, two years, I believe it was two years in the contract, at the end of that, we could call it quits. There's no auto renewal if it's got bugs to work out, or if it's working great, like you said. There's no auto renewal.
But you could call it quits, but you spent two million dollars on a system that we're not really wanting to call it quits with, you know?
We don't want to spend two million dollars to do it again if it's not working. However, where did that money come from is important.
Okay, um, excuse me, could y'all quieten down just a little bit, please?
Can I ask something in the chat?
Can I ask a question?
Okay. Karen's got a question.
May I ask y'all, whomever? Um, it seemed like I read somewhere something about, you know, it, it's put on your servers at, at your school or the cameras that are on your servers, right?
It's, they're putting in, they're, it's called an edge server. It's made by Dell, and they're putting those in our camera system. We already have a camera system that has servers. They're going to add an additional server to each one of those schools. Now, these are communication servers. So what I want to explain with that is, AI picks up on something, it communicates within, through, worst case scenario, through a cell phone signal, one point five seconds, communicates that out to the key stakeholders that need to know.
Right.
There's no storage of anything on the servers that they're putting in. To, to Mr. Mizell's point, nothing goes to the cloud. Only thing that's on the servers that we currently own is typical camera footage that we normally have. What they're putting in is a communication server. So it doesn't store anything. It literally sees, reports, talks. That's what it does.
And, and I don't know where I read this, or, or maybe I imagined it, but something about the possibility of the server needing to have additional room, and that might be where additional money might happen in the future.
Upgrade maintenance, is that what you're referring to?
No, uh, because I don't think that's a part of it.
It's the upgraded storage or whatever.
Yeah, upgraded storage.
Everything that's needed, because nothing is being stored. It goes through and goes, and the least submitted that is-
So a, a server would last forever in that case, right?
Well, eventually, just like anything else with technology, eventually, servers do wear out. Now, the question is, these are minimalist servers.
Or get better, yeah, or get-
So they last a good bit. So the key question would be to ask evidence how long one of these edge servers lasts.
Yeah, and if that's something that might have to be replaced.
Correct.
Okay, I probably got one more question, and this Mr. Sean's probably not going to like this, but have y'all done any research on evidence and ATOS, their parent company? Okay, it's probably very important if you're going to go in business with somebody or you're going to use their product to, to check their company, okay?
Mr., Mr. Chairman.
Excuse me, one second, I'm, I'm asking a question.
See a question.
Um, Europe, do you know where the company's out of?
No, sir.
Okay. The company's in Europe, and from what I can find on the internet, they was on the verge of collapse in two thousand twenty-four. And on the verge of being taken over by the French government. So it's all on the internet. Now, whether that's true or not, not everything you read on the internet is true. But again, I do a lot of research when I'm, I'm going to spend money with somebody or I'm, I'm going to go in business with them because this, this needs to be a long-term relationship. And we want to make sure the folks that we're signing an agreement with, or y'all are, is stable. So we're not ended up, as the county commissioners here, trying to recover from something that we've got to come up with emergency funds for, for, uh, safety issues. Go ahead, Mr. Elliott.
I thought their stock was a quarter. Yeah, a quarter.
Mr. Elliott, I'm sorry, did you?
I, I was just wanting to, to say for, you know, for decorum, I know we're bashing y'all with a lot of questions, but I, I necessarily would, would think that we could, uh, you know, we're, we're not holding our North Carolina Republican legislature at a high light, or our Republican Senator Steve Jarvis at too high of a light, or our Republican sheriff, Richie Simmons, at too high of a light, sitting here bashing everything that they put forward to us. We, we, we need this conversation, uh, together and to ask them the questions right there. So because, because our legislature put this forward, our senator brought this forward. And, uh, have, have we had any conversations with him other than asking them what's out of their control?
And I'm not bashing anybody, okay?
But it sounded like we're, we're bashing this bill in, in the county and no, the people that selected or wrote the bill.
I'm just asking questions. They're signing the contract, so I'm just asking them pertinent questions, I think, right? That, that you guys were wanting-
They're good, yeah.
Chairman, Mr. Chairman. I, I did hear, Senator Steve Jarvis did say they had an educa-, education committee who did review the company, the history, the financials. So maybe some of that oversight, not saying there's not more to do, but maybe some of that oversight has happened at the state level.
And maybe it was overlooked.
It could have been.
Don't you think they ought to send that to you, a commissioner and a school board?
Oh, the actual review documentation?
I mean, really, guys, think about it. You're taxpayers, why excuse them? You should have that information.
And like I say, it might not be correct information. I can only, I can only do what I read.
Right, but if there's a formal review, it'd be good to get our hands on it, to, to your point.
Yeah, we will. Mr. McClure, you're the only one that hasn't said anything, sir. Are you, you good?
No, no.
And, and Sean, I appreciate you hanging on, man, because it's been a while you've been on the phone.
I've been here for one or nine years. What I always ask is where the money going to come from? Because we have to know where the money come from. We have, uh, I forget how many SROs we had that came to us on a grant. It was our idea, it was our term at that period that when the grant run out, the positions run out. So who pays for them now?
They're grant funded.
I'm sorry? What grant is that?
The school safety grant, sir.
School what?
On a safety grant, school safety grant, sir.
Okay. I'll look at that.
I've heard a lot of things in here. I've never heard-
That was only one thing. I have been, for more than a decade, disappointed in the state doing what they said they're going to do. And if, in the next two years or three years or four years, you have all Democrats up there instead of Republicans, are they going to think the same way as you? What I'm getting to is, is this is infant, in its infancy. I, I read someplace in there, there was like three hundred and forty-four, uh, school systems that had it operating. That ain't a whole lot when you talk to the schools that would be in the, in the USA. I think that the questions have been asked. Steve asked them, Yates has asked them. And, um, Wofford has said that we need to get, get together. I, I can remember going through one of the schools that had recommended that the county would look at them. And we actually walked through, uh, the schools. And the, the idea of that was that there would be, um, one entrance or two, and that they would be protected in those one or two. And that once everybody was in, then all the doors would be locked. You could go out them, but you couldn't get back in. And that was, and that was the plan. And we was walking, we was walking through, and one of the, one of the halls there, somebody came in the door, and it was supposed to be locked. We can't rely upon, um, stuff that people say because we were told then that this was one of the best, uh, plans that they had. We have looked at these things over and over again. And we have asked all of the superintendents to get in touch with us with any updates or any systems that they want. And, and that's what you're doing. My problem is I don't trust the state to do what they're gonna do. Whenever, whenever all the COVID stuff took place, I wrote a letter, a resolution, to the state and asked the state to please allow the county commissioners the liberty to make decisions on openings and closings. Somebody's file up there, I guess, 'cause I never heard anything back from it. And, you know, it's, I just, I just feel that we need more information than what we've got. If we, if we, I don't say we trashed the thing, but I think that if it's in its infancy, let's wait and see what's it gonna do. And I have looked at this company, and the numbers that they give, as they say they're accurate. They were at a loss before, and they went into receivership, and they're at a loss in the receivership. There's not any real concrete idea of what we're gonna have if we put them in charge. And if we put them in charge and they fail, who picks up the pieces? It's gonna be the counties, unless we say we ain't gonna do it. And we can always say we're not gonna do it. But that's a, that's a question that you need to ask. Because you need to know, you know, years ago, I was told that one way of looking at some stuff is to throw a pond, uh, throw a rock in a pond. And then go out and look at all where the ripples are. And unless you can account for all the ripples and them not doing any damage, then I don't think that it's a good idea to do. And I don't think that the questions have been answered. I'm not saying that y'all don't, I think you have all the information that you have. We have all the information that, that we have. Some of it's good, some of it's not so good. But if you get through the, the two years and the hundred and other money that they give us on the grant, that's that money that, that not gonna be looked for at jail, or SROs, or anybody else, 'cause that money, just, just for one thing. Is that right?
Is this grant?
Yes.
Just for one thing. Just a hand.
Yeah, 'cause I believe, if I'm not mistaken, when we first were awarded the grant, we weren't really sure what it even meant. Uh, AI software, or AI safety initiative, what that meant. And, uh.
Yeah, and like I say, maybe, maybe, uh, maybe Senator Jarvis will just let us have the money and send it to the county and us decide as a whole how to spend the two thousand. Are, are you finished? Are you finished? You got one more point?
The legislation.
I say that, 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 uh, money comes, there is a grant, this company happens to, to, uh, stay in business and does a good job for two years. When it comes time for the two years, how much would he pay them?
That's a very valid question, absolutely.
And I think that having a system that's not in, in its infancy will answer some of those questions.
And we asked that on the twenty-first, two hundred days specifically.
Sure they gave you a, a solid rock amount.
You know that. Rock solid.
Let's hope Sean's better tonight.
Yeah, yeah.
But that's a, that's something that worries me, because I, I've, again, I have seen the state revert and reverse themselves on more than one occasion.
Yeah, I mean, I think that one of the concerns with us is a, it's a hard, if, if this was to be implemented, it's a big investment of time for our staff, right? It's gonna be a lot of training, create hierarchies, understanding who's alerted when things, what's, you know, if it's a man down, if one of our custodian has a heart attack while they're out, we eat in the bank, and that person's alerted, obviously, that doesn't need to go to Mr. Simmons, right? That needs to go to our fire and safety folks. And so creating those hierarchies is gonna take a lot of time, and, and we realize that. And the last thing we wanna do is invest a lot of time and effort into something that we can't fund down the road. Uh, and we understand that. And that's when we talk about MOU, we get that you guys don't wanna be liable to hold, and, and I think, uh, Casey shared in our meeting the other day that who knows where any of us will be in two years, right? I mean, as far as that goes, uh.
Don't be here.
I have no doubt, I have no doubt, just certain. Uh, and we all agree with that, and that's why we pumped the brakes initially, because we didn't know the answer to that question. And it's not fair to come ask you guys for something that, you know, we took on as a grant, if the state's not willing to fund those things. Um, and when talking to Mr. Jarvis, that's been a question that we consistently ask, is what does that look like? And I think when talking to Casey, it was, uh, we're willing to talk about those things, let's sit down and do it mutually. Let's do it together, as you said, Mr. Gage. So when we come in two years, let's look at the data, and let's sit down and say, hey, did it work, did it not? But let's do it collectively, as a team. Um, a- and that's where we're at with it. And at that, that point, we have opportunities to write grants. Uh, Mr. Johnston does a phenomenal job of grant writing. Uh, we've been awarded a lot of grants that no one else in our state has been awarded. We have the largest Golden Leaf Fund grant ever awarded in North Carolina.
Just one other comment. If you want an example of how something is said is gonna work and doesn't necessarily work, look at the health system that's in this state. You may have years, you know how many years that's been padded around?
Yeah.
And they went from one group in there with eight, another one with six, then four, then six. Now it's individual, and, and, uh, the people with the, uh, public health are the ones that are, um, involved in it. One of the things that I ask them, I say, you call Blue Cross Blue Shield, who's the answer? Well, I can tell you, if he's come from this country, you can't understand him. But most of the time, most of the time, you just have to punch a button. And unfortunately, the.
Sometimes they are.
Yeah, well. It happens same way.
When I want to do your MRI, I can't get ahold of anybody.
But those, those are, those are the concern, those are the concerns I have.
Absolutely.
But, all right, one of the things, and then we're gonna talk to Sean. One of the things I would say, if I served on this committee that we're talking about, which I serve on too many already, probably, and, um, but I'd ask, the technology that Nashville put in this weekend, they must really think it's technology that they need. And you can go on there and read what technology they put in over the weekend at their schools. And it's metal, it's metal, I don't know much about it, other than what I've read, researched. Metal detection and AI that stands up like this, no facial recognition, so that's out into question.
I think we all agree on that. And that's fair, we can all agree that that is not something any of us.
That's right.
Correct. Now, I don't know if it works, but there's a good article online about it. They use it at the Panther Stadium. Mecklenburg School System is using it. Um, so.
They gave that in the arsenal, I think we all agree that.
No, it's not added. This is taking the place, pretty much, of, because Nashville's, and they said that the AI system that they had just, it wouldn't work, you know?
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, I g- I don't know.
Like, just the entrance, main entrance?
Main entrance, you know?
Wherever the cameras at, right?
I don't know, you know?
Nick, wherever the cameras at, right? I'm saying, where you got a school camera?
No, this is something you just walk through. They walk through with their bag. They, they walk through with their bags and everything, you know? And I ain't saying that's the answer, okay? Mr. Jarvis here, he's a good technical guy, I ain't saying that's the answer. I'm just saying, for some reason, Saturday and Sunday, the Nashville, or Davidson County, that's what it is, Davidson County, Tennessee, started putting these things in, a- and it's a loner from the company, um, to put them in for safety reasons, and it's a metal detector. Now, I'm gonna tell you, I feel probably safer with, with my grandchildren in school with a metal detector.
I think that's right, right at ninety thousand dollars a piece.
I, I don't know, but you know, again, if we're.
That's what Lexington had, if they were.
If, if we're talking about safety then, and if we're gonna, if we're gonna pin it to safety, then it costs what it costs, and we gotta do it, you know? I- if that's what we're gonna do. But don't spend two million on something that don't work, unless somebody sees it. Um, but again, a metal detector, if I got a gun, but there's way, I've, I've got a lot of education last couple of days. There's other things that they're doing now, that metal detectors can't get them, and neither can AI. Uh, so, you know, and, and I'm not gonna mention that, because it's just, you know, but the people doing this already know that, okay, so.
And I think the big thing for us is, is nothing is oil, right? We've all talked about that. Nothing is a hundred percent guaranteed to work a hundred percent of the time. You and I had that conversation, right? You said that, like, if someone wants to do ill will, they're gonna do.
They will.
Um, our job is to just try to find ways to help prevent as much as you can.
And, and hopefully, we don't push them from doing it inside to outside. You know, and that's always, again, that's always been what I said, you might protect them inside, but how you gonna protect them outside?
I know you mentioned something about the bus stop, right? They may follow a bus to a bus stop, and then.
No, not a bus stop. I'm talking about where they load the bus at, okay?
Yeah.
Uh, that's open, I mean, but again, I don't wanna discuss this stuff, because it's not something that, of course.
Ideas.
Yeah, any ideas, you know, because it's just, it's just not. But if, if you go up to a school and you look around, it's pre- it's pretty easy to figure out how you could cause, cause, uh, so, anyhow, but okay, thank you very much. We'll get on, on line with Sean and.
One other thing. We had, when, we went through all of the stuff with the STEM classes, where we go out for, we went to three states and looked at the actual benefit. I mean, the, the people who were in the, in the chef classes actually fixed the dinners for the people who went to take a look at it. And we did that, because we wanted to know what the product was. We wanted to know how it worked. Was it really organized the way it needed to be? Some were good, some were not so good. But I just thought I'd admit that, thank you.
We got one more question, I'm sorry. Matt just told me he's got it. Sean? Okay, all right, sorry, thanks.
Thank y'all.
And thank y'all, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Sean, can you hear us? Okay. Hold on a second, I need to figure out how to turn.
Can he share his face? Just read it.
I'm gonna try, I haven't, I haven't found through the internet, it's a little bit slow here.
How are you doing this afternoon? We got a question by Mr. Mazel.
Yes, uh, Sean, thanks for being here with us. A quick question on, uh, and I don't know if you have these numbers handy, but in terms of a similar system that has been run in other parts of the country, other states, other schools, um, one, at the end of any kind of test or pilot program, what, can you kinda describe what an evaluation or an assessment looks like? And then two, the second part is, of the school systems that have piloted this program, what's been the conversion to adoption?
So, uh, to ask the first question, a lot of the evaluation, um, that we have are, I mean, I've got it back up a little bit. So there's a lot of layers and security. So when you walk into, it's not just the position system that we're implementing, it's also the zero effects factors, technology which allows notifications and allows us to respond to certain situations quicker. So when we go in to do the evaluation of the system, we do two things. We evaluate the school itself, where cameras are placed, uh, how that, how much they can see. Um, a lot of schools are short on these cameras, a lot of schools don't have cameras in the right places, or the right kind of cameras. Um, so if that first thing identified, what type of security posture is there? As far as what can see, what's capable will be picked, be picked up. And then the second part of that is, what are the school policies and procedures for, for reacting to those type of things? Because once we detect something, and, and that's what we're here to do, is try to detect something before it happens, is how fast can that notification to the right people, and how can they apply their, their security, you know, your standard security procedures to that situation, and we'll respond faster. Um, so, so, so varies from school to school, and it varies from issue to issue, but we try to set up drills with each one of the schools, uh, each one of our clients, uh, to be able to identify which one of these actors is best for them. And then we evaluate based, based on those, those factors, depending what's important to them. As far as the conversion rate, I mean, I, I can't really comment on how high the conversion rate is. We've been doing monitoring for twenty-five plus years. Uh, we're in parent facilities, we're in universities, we're in airports, prisons, or, or all of the world, we've been doing AI detection of these things for a long, long time. And we have a lot of very, very important people trying to make it better every day, so, um, it, 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 I'm not sure the actual, you know, conversion numbers are. I, I don't know if I can, if that's specific, we'll have to try it.
Yeah, I'd be curious, and that's usually one of the telltale signs of a, a program that's successful, is, you know, you move from trial to adoption. Um, one clarifying question, um, to what I had asked about evaluation. I meant more from, uh, evaluating its effectiveness compared to maybe the, the previous system. So I don't, and again, I'm sure it differs by school district, 'cause again, you know, they're all, you know, different, and they house data differently. But do you look at, you know, hey, response times before this system was X, and then post this system, response times were this, and we've seen a decline, and I'm, I'm kinda making it up, but that, that's more of like a performance evaluation, is what I was asking.
Yeah, I heard, so, um, so as far as response time, like, we, we should do it as fast as possible when we can do it. So the difference is that it's easier. In a traditional, non-obvious system, right, you don't have anybody sitting in the schoolroom, they're not, no one's watching the cameras. Uh, you may or may not have an SRO on site, you have teachers in classrooms. Uh, a lot of times, you don't have cameras in classrooms, you don't have cameras in certain places in the system. So depending on what those are, or what technical skills are, you know, a lot of times, when these type of events happen, it's when they have a weapon, or a, or, that someone's not around to see that. Uh, they're not around to watch that all the time. So the one, the, the place, more of these situations, when you watch those, uh, that's what we're, that's how we're trying to increase the time that she responds, is by, by actually seeing that, instead of responding to that in a reactive way. So, uh, when we do that, we reduce, you know, the, the number taken, and the happen, the scene of the fall over. And, you know, um, my, uh, mother lost a teacher one time, she, you know, fell on her classroom, uh, she broke her leg. Um, she had to call, you know, she had to call her desk and call, uh, her husband. And those come to this all over here for hours. Uh, this is my system to pick up that kind of thing. If they fell down, they don't get it, you know, fast enough. This type of system could've picked it up and it could've, you know, emergency personnel. And the same thing, those sort of weapons, if they take that weapon somewhere, or someone's not around, and we're trying to prep and prepare, as long as the camera has a clear sight of view on the weapon, just like individually, um, it would give you much more, much faster response time. Um, one of the statistics around that was, you know, seventy percent of the time that, that weapons are taken out in, in these, uh, school shootings and events, uh, it was seen by a camera before it was ever seen by anyone else, or it's, it occurred. It may not have been notified, but it was notified by cameras. They, they go back to their camera system, try to find out what happened, and they did pick that up. So what we're trying to do is, uh, allow the AI system to base this up ahead of time, so we can decrease that, that response time. So as soon as the AI system sees it, it's milliseconds for that to go out. It sends it, you know, across the group, we're after, notifies who's there, so the SRO that is on duty knows exactly, you know, what camera that's coming from, what school that's coming from, where this first, this event happened, and it does the twenty-four percent. So, um, you know, when, whenever it happens, it's always watching to, to look for that, to make sure it's doing that. Does that answer your question?
That, that helped answer some. I, you know, I would like to see, and like I said, I'm, I'm sure others too, and would be interested to see the, the conversion, right? The adoption after trial, 'cause again, that speaks to a trust in a, in a product, or, or in this case, right, a system. Um, and just to kinda clarify, and then I'll yield back, and I'm, 'cause I'm sure my colleagues have questions. Uh, you would, I wanna make sure I was following, 'cause I think I said ninety percent when I was talking about it, but it's seventy percent. You said that based on, again, actual incidents, seventy percent of the time, um, the, the person perpetrating the incident or the threat takes out the weapon. So it's visible, and the cameras, again, not AI cameras, but just cameras in general, capture this, but the fact that it does. but the fact that it doesn't use any kind of really fast algorithm, AI, to detect it, we miss it, and you kind of see the gun after the fact when going back looking at the video. Is that correct?
That, that, that's correct, because for the most part, all of the school systems, most video systems are there to capture something after it happened. So, I was wrong, or something happened, and they go back and they see what happened. This watches it in real time, and it detects it in real time. So, as soon as it detects it, it's like having somebody watching every single camera in the system, looking for whatever you're looking for, right? It's only trained for certain things. It's not a learning system. We train it to do individual things. We're training for weapons. We're training for smoke. We're training for people falling down. We're training it for perimeter detection, which is when somebody steps into a certain area, they jump a fence, or they went to an area they're not supposed to be, but it's only trained to do those certain things. So, it's a, it's a one of these things, it's not like the other, um, where it's saying, I'm looking for this, and everything else doesn't know how to do it either. It just knows to do what we're trained to do, and we've been doing this for over twenty years, so.
Alright, thank you, Sean.
Trip, you wanna go next, or you want me, you good?
Go ahead, I'm ready.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Chris?
Yeah, so, uh, so how do, how do you represent this company? Uh, what's your position and, uh, in the, in the hierarchy of the company, 'cause that's gonna, that's gonna lead to my next question.
Um, my, my position, I'm the head of AI delivery and support, so I, I go in and I help to live the system, and I'll support the system after delivery.
Are you just one support systems person in the, in the company? Or are you the actual one who, who drives training out to everybody else? You're just not like a regional salesman, or, or do you represent?
No, no, I'm not, I'm no salesman at all. I'm a, I'm, you know, my history is, so, I'm from Idaho myself. My history is in data and big data systems, and I moved into AI about a few years ago. Um, my expertise is in learning systems to work and making sure that it works. So, I come in and I make sure things are installed right. I make sure the right people are setting the right thing. We, we make sure this, 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 right?
Okay.
So, I, you know, my, my goal is to expect stuff to be successful, so, um, and, you know, I, I'm a professional in this, and I say this a lot, because, you know, I, I've been in schools, um, but it's just one of those, yeah, I, I come in and I help to find the process to get the system out there to all your schools. We help set up the rules. We help, uh, define the procedures to make sure that, that it's there. Um, which I don't have.
Okay.
It's just, we're, we're usually self-re generators, uh, you guys are just in our team, I would say. Maybe we're working with the state, the districts directly to do this, or for this, you know, for the current.
The reason why I ask that question is, um, is it, is it correct that this software was in the Davidson County Nashville school that just had the, it's not, is it same type of system?
It was a different, it was a different company and what, what, if, if I remember right, what they said is they didn't have enough cameras in the right places to be able to see it, so it's like it's acting the police when they came in. A similar thing, if they were looking for weapons detection, but they didn't have cameras in the right place, it didn't pick up the weapon.
So, we have a resident expert here in the, uh, citizen that, that's a part of our meeting, who's a firearms instructor. And if, if you had a, a correct holster that was on the body underneath clothing, would this system pick that type of firearm up?
No, no, not at all. You know, this, this is a vision aid, just like if you must be.
So, once you pull it out, it's gonna pick, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
But it's good, there's, there's no way that, well, I shouldn't say there's no way. I'm sure in the future we're gonna have to do this, never think of anything. But based off the vision, normal camera protection out, there's no way to detect that unless you see a camera, mission.
So, pairing this with, with metal detectors, you could not only pick up like medical events, and when they pull the firearm out, you'd be able to select and record from that point, but outside, if there was nothing that had to do with a firearm or anything else, you could detect if a child fell out or if a, a patron or citizen fell out, it would detect those type of deals?
Yeah, correct. So, just like any security system, you have a lot of different attack vectors and launchers. She is eight metal detectors is one. Uh, vision security is one. I mean, procedures, security response from police, and, you know, security personnel account. There's a lot of different pieces that go to, and they get a very, very, you know, uh, it's a total system. This is just one piece of, of your, your case.
Thank you, sir, that's all I have.
Mr. McClure? Sean?
Hey, Sean, this is Commissioner Kestrel. How are you this evening? Good, I appreciate you being here. I just, I just wanna kind of redirect you briefly to a question Chairman Yates had originally about the ongoing cost. You kinda, kinda answered that in your first paragraph up there. You said your ongoing costs are included in support within the first two years, but our main question was, are there any estimates on after that? And I wanted to see.
After that, I meant, that was included in the SW that were, that we shared, uh, with the district as well. But I think if I remember right, it was less than a hundred thousand a year for ongoing support. And that was for all of our, and for support, just to lose upgrades. Uh, you don't have, new software that's coming out, upgrade support.
So, your estimate is about a hundred thousand a year? The cost would fall on the school district to maintain it? Okay, thank you.
But, but you do, but you, you know, also you are, and it's not hard, so if you subscribe, it's just you wouldn't, if, if you, if you don't upgrade, you wouldn't get those upgrades after the first years, uh, if you didn't, you know, renew the support.
Okay, thank you. Somebody was wanting to know, is that per school or for the whole system?
No, it's for the whole, the whole district.
Whole district, okay.
I'm sorry, I was talking the whole time, so I didn't hear that.
Somebody posed the question, is that a hundred thousand per school or for the entire district? Did he said the entire district?
And that's a hundred thousand a year?
A hundred thousand a year to maintain.
After the two years, so there's some actual money.
After the two years.
Okay.
There's other questions. What if we don't like it?
Yeah.
What if we don't like it and wanna take it out? What would be the cost?
The cost, it now wouldn't really cost you anything. You, you own the software, so, I mean, anything you could use off the hardware. Uh, if, if there's any value left to it, same with the software.
Service call. They'll charge your service call.
Do you have a question, eh?
Yeah.
Sean? Uh, Steve Shale, listen, you said around a hundred thousand for a year, but, and I hear you right.
Well, this is, yes.
All right, is there any additional maintenance costs in addition to the hundred thousand re-up a year?
Maintenance costs in, to me, like personnel costs?
Maintaining the server, upgrades, or whatever, within the year.
Um, I mean, there could be after a number of years, like any software, the software changes. Um, it could require upgrades, but that would be five, maybe ten years down the road.
Would that require a new server?
Yeah, and, and, and or if you add, like, actually even a number of cameras. So, a lot of these systems are based off the Austin power, and you expect the systems to be able to handle, so actually handle more than you know, sort of can handle. So, if you went and doubled or tripled or quadrupled the number of cameras, and you wanted to add AI on top of all of that, it may take additional hardware to do that, but for the most part, you should be able to add, you know, some cameras for some and so on as is, uh, without having to do any additional.
When you, when you, do you set up the servers yourself, or do you sell it to the schools and they set it up?
No, we, we kind of, so, we're basically, we, we set up the hardware. Uh, all the software from screen cells, or, 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 they have a deployment technology called native edge, which allows you to push the software to all the servers without having to go to each one in the district and then handle that in district level. Um, and then you can go in each, and when we will go in with, with the, the school and the district, have each system configure each school initially, uh, for some of those use cases, and then train them on how to configure more. So, we'll help you set up, you know, the smoke detection, fire detection, perimeter detection, um, the trip and call, weapons detection on the cameras that we've included in there. And then after that, if there's anything else that you wanna do, you, you'll be trained up to be able to do that yourself. And then we offer support for two years if you guys need to, to learn how to do that better, or if you have questions on how to do that, we'll help, help you get through those weekends, those additional, uh, those tools. The system itself comes with what we call a rule today's engine, so you can do a lot of complex things. So, it's not just looking at like a perimeter. You can say if somebody, you know, across the, jumps the fence, and they're across the fence for more than ten seconds, and they go back, then don't alert. Uh, or you, you can say if they jump the fence and they fall down, then alert. Um, but you can put a lot of these stairs stepping in that as far as what rules you wanna do and combine them together to provide, you know, a, a better sense of, of learning for whatever situations we include. Try to get, like, if someone goes into a hallway at one position, and we see him in another, another hallway at another position, then don't do anything. But if they're delivering in a hallway for two hours and, and we can't see them, then maybe you'll alert somebody for something they have.
Uh, one quick question, one more quick question, I'm sorry.
Again, or?
You mentioned earlier about deficiency either in quantity or quality of cameras within the school system. When you're setting up these systems and doing your testing, do you advise the school system that you have a, that they have a problem?
I mean, during, during our site surveys, on the first one, the school, we do a site survey, and we'll identify where all the cameras are, uh, angle of the cameras, what they can see, what they can't see. And then we'll advise the schools as far as whether or not cameras are in the right places, if they're in good spots for certain situations. If you, for instance, if you wanna be able to monitor, uh, you know, your doorways, you know, your doorways and people just coming in more, or if you wanna monitor the playground for people falling down, we'll, we'll help them identify which cameras are in the right spot and, and have the right full review of that, uh, as we go through that. So, and that includes like line slots and other things. So, when we do that site survey, we try to identify all those things to give them a better security posture.
Thank you, Sean.
Alright, Sean, I guess it's my time. I guess, um, site survey, you've already done that, correct, at these schools?
Uh, no, no, that would be, so, uh, all we've done at the school is we have a general knowledge of what some of the schools are. Each school, when we do, when we want to do the deployment, we will go into everything in school into the site survey.
So, there's the possibility we need eighteen hundred cameras instead of nine hundred, and possibly, right?
I mean, there's, there's always, you know, always more cameras that are, you wanna cap, capture everything. Um, but, yeah, it, it, it is a balancing act at these, especially these sites, because you have to worry about, uh, you know, being on it much, uh, worrying about cameras in, you know, rooms, schoolrooms, and those type of things. We have to, you know, measure that for what you guys need, for what you guys want. So, we just wanna give you guys a situational awareness as possible. Uh, if you, if you, if you recommend cameras, and if you can make a decision whether or not you want to put cameras in those locations.
Okay, um, I don't know how many folks in the audience have employees or whatever, but, and you may know this, um, I have cameras at, at one of my facilities, or all of them really, but anyhow, the employees always seem to know where the cameras are at. So, I don't know that I fault them for that, but, um, I'm a little worried that this is something the kids would know too, where the cameras is at and where they're not, um, if they want to do ill will. Uh, I'm not so sure that would really matter to them at that point, if they, once they got into school, whether there was a camera there or not, so. Um, but anyhow, what is the percentage of false positive? These cameras go off and they show a gun or show something that may be a gun, or they think it's a gun, but it's a false positive?
Uh, that's, that's a really hard statistic to come by. Um, I mean, there are false positives for some events. We try to minimize that a lot with our rule station, where we can, we can double check on that. Uh, we're also, it is working in data on a backup system that, that, once the system does detect, we send it to a backup system to do a double check. And that's also why you have a man in the middle attack, right, or man in the middle. So, you have the alert go out to an SRO or somebody sit and look at the system and say, hey, yes, this is, this is what really, you know, this is a positive or this is a false. Um, we like detecting as many false positives as possible, because every time we get a false positive, we can train that back in the system. So, um, we can customize your algorithm for those systems, for those types of things. So, when we get a false positive, we can know that, you know, this is in a situation where this is actually happening. Where a lot of systems are just a generic, uh, AI system, that they don't get that training for that feedback. And we, we really wanna know that feedback in the system, so we can make it a better, you know, make it a better system.
I got you. I wanted to make sure I heard that right now. It could be that the, that it goes to the SRO officer first for him to check for false positive?
Well, hey, with note to whoever you guys define, uh, per school, so, what would happen, the system would detect something. And it's then that detection through the Raptor system, and in the Raptor system, you define groups of people, whether it's an individual person or, or a group of people, and then that alert will go out, and then that, then they can look at that, and they can look at humans and say, this is an actual event, or this is not an event, and they can provide feedback, you know, if it's an event, they can say, oh, this is cool. They can say, you know, you know, we need, we need on there immediately, or it can be set up so immediately go to nine-one-one. If it goes to nine-one-one every single time, you can do that too.
Thank you.
But not every situation is gonna require that, so if it's just like a perimeter tech or something, maybe you want it to have that personal bill. Um, but those are situations that we can work with you guys and see what the best policy is, and what works best is your best in school.
Yep. Sean, I tell you what, I don't have any more questions. Thank you very much for your time. Uh, any other board members have any questions?
No.
And thank you very much. I, I apologize for keeping you on so long tonight, and, um.
Thank you for providing, I appreciate it. You guys, you know, we're, we're really, we're working, I mean, we really want to work, you know, a lot of, you know, personal, you know, about this. This is one of the things we've been working on this for about two years, with the school district and the state, to do what the, the teams, uh.
Mr. Yates, have a question for Sean?
Okay, come right up.
Oh, please, can you hear, Sean, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
So, can we take that facial recognition completely out of the, out of the bill? Do you, do you, can you put?
I can put it to your Senator and your state, you can take it out of the bill. And we can take it out of the licensing on a school by school basis, so if you don't want any license, they can't turn it on. We can license it that way, and, but we can still make it available in the future for free if, if it ever decides to do that.
Yep.
Um, a- as far as our facial recognition goes, it's not like, you know, I, I heard some of the comments about the other systems that were implemented in the cities. Uh, our facial recognition doesn't try to track everybody. It, it, I tend to like teaching a toddler, you teach a toddler to identify a orange, and then every time I see an orange, I can raise my hand and say, I saw that. Well, that's how ours works, is we, we see it in this, you know, cases of things that people, we want to be able to identify, and it says, I saw that person. Um, it doesn't know what to do with individuals that have control, it, it doesn't know how to identify, you know, how it's doing. It says, this doesn't match what I'm looking for, so it just moves on. So, if that was ever, if that's ever wants to be, it's part of technology, part of, it's a technology there, but it does not have to be.
So, Mr. Chairman, could I ask just one question? So, that would be like the sheriff's department's, um, uh, I guess, group of like sexual predators and, and gang members that are locally, tho- those are already inundated in the sheriff's software and in the state's software with those facial recognition, so it would, it would notify us if one of those people came on?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The technology isn't smart enough. I mean, we would have to go back and, and there would be absolutely rights to be able to do tracking and anything that, that, it's not built to do that. It's just built to say, I'm looking for X, I saw that.
So. Hey, Mr. Chairman, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. With no other questions, thank you for your time, and, um.
Thank you for providing, I appreciate it.
Alright, have a good night.
Mr. Chairman, I have a motion.
What's your motion?
I move that we make a request from our legislative delegation, I'm sorry, sorry, folks. I move that we make a request from our legislative delegation to send the money to us instead of them doing the appropriations themselves, so that we could have input and sit down with our school board and find out exactly what we need.
Send the school board, or send the money?
Send it to us.
To us, yeah.
Unless we, unless you don't trust us.
Well, I trust them.
You don't trust us, eh?
I do, I, I, I trust us, but why, why would we take the money from the school board?
It returns local patrol back to the local government.
But they're elected officials.
I know.
Are we saying that we're above them? Like, if, if the state gives them money?
No, we're not saying that at all. It just puts us in the middle of, of a discussion that we can have. And, uh, I mean, that's a motion. You don't have to second it, you don't have to vote for it.
I won't.
We have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? So I think the discussion ought to be, the money would come to the board of commissioners. And the board of commissioners would work with the school systems.
Board, uh,
With a committee. Committee? Am I hearing this right? Is that, because I, I don't want the school board to think the money's coming to us for us to keep and spend on the jail, because that's not, I don't think the intent here, so I'm trying to clarify with this discussion.
The school board may choose to use another option.
No, but I'm saying if the money comes here, you're saying we would get with the school boards?
Absolutely.
And look at an option?
Yes. That's what the purpose of the monies would be for.
And you're asking, um, okay, go ahead.
The, uh, school folks are the ones that got the grant.
Yeah.
They once applied for it.
They didn't apply for it. They, they didn't apply for the grant.
Well, they accepted or whatever.
Well, they hadn't accepted it yet, okay? That's what this whole.
Vote next Monday, how's that work? Are we calling the vote next?
Yeah. What I'm concerned about is, is, uh, if the commissioners, would the commissioners be able to get the money? If the school board is the one that's going to okay it?
Well, I think what Commissioner Shale, his motion is, is he asked the delegation that we as a board, um, hold the money to appoint a committee to look at what maybe the best solutions are for a total security system. I'm putting words in your mouth now, okay, if I'm saying something wrong.
That's pretty much what I said. They don't have to choose that system. The monies would be available, you know, we could have a lot, some good conversations there, I think.
Of what system's the best and what?
Could I say something? Could I say something?
Yes, this is.
Would it not be better, before you ask that, form the committee and let the committee work on looking at things, possibly looking at other things? You know, looking at this system. Would it not be better to do that first? Instead of talking about doing the money part, that's, that's what I'd like to propose.
Too late.
No, I don't think so. Not, not if the, the two groups or three groups who are working together on coming together with the, the system, then it looks like to me you're making a decision together and then the school board can, you know.
Well, as you be, as you be frank and blunt about this, okay? We don't have one right to tell them people what to do.
Amen.
We don't.
And they can implement this program if they so choose to implement this program.
But I, I, I have the feeling.
And so I don't even know what a committee would do with us on it, because they don't have to listen to us.
But, but I think the, I think the valuable part is, these professionals showed up here tonight with open dialogue with our superintendent and our school board members to come here to work together. Not, not for us just to say, hey, now we're going to take all the money and then, I, I just, I feel like, because we have no authority over y'all, uh, the citizens of the county that voted y'all in the office too. And y'all could vote Monday to move forward and be done with it, so.
So, yeah, we, we got discussion here.
Yeah, it's good to have.
But that's my concern is.
Mr. Chairman, I would, I withdraw my motion. I withdraw my motion. It's obvious that that's not.
No, no, no. I mean, I think we need to have discussion.
I think we're having.
But because I was going.
No, we're not, we're having one side of discussion.
I was gonna have a.
I just wanted to see that.
I was gonna have a rebuttal with Ms. Watford here.
Okay.
There's no need to have in a committee if we don't have any money. So you can't get the committee in front of the money, because if the money's coming, if we ask the legislators to give it to us, they may not. So if they don't give us the money and they say it's the school system's money to see how they see fit, then it's their vote. But what I was asking is, or Commissioner Shale was, a resolution to ask the legislators to give us the money, because we've got two other school systems too we got to look at. So, you know, I get it, Davidson County, I see you laughing, Mr. Jarvis, and I'm sorry you feel that way. But we have two other school systems and all of them are in Davidson County, so, you know, it's, it's, it's us.
My concern is that the, the grant was allocated from Steve Jarvis, our state representative, right?
Mm-hmm.
Those funds were allocated for Davidson County schools. Not Lexington, not Thomasville, they were looking for Davidson County schools, right? Okay, we, we're here tonight because you guys asked us to be here. And we chose, we said we want to be here because we want to work together to figure out how we make this work. We have concerns as well. But to vilify us and say now to the point where y'all take, we're going to talk to, to Mr. Jarvis and say, give us the money. Then we'll form a committee that you guys can be a part of and we'll tell you, now that we got to bring in Lexington and Thomasville, we'll tell you guys how y'all can spend the money that was a grant to us, not to you guys, not to Lexington City. But we're here because we want to be open and have those conversations to figure that out.
And I understand that. And understand this, the two million that's coming back here is Davidson County taxpayers' money, Lexington, Thomasville and Davidson County together, so it's everybody's money from this county.
Then why don't you provide the school system?
Uh, really, you want to know why? You don't know that yet? You've been on the school board?
The money.
Yeah, you don't, you don't, how much money? Do you know that?
Uh, if Mr. Kestner and I talked about the other day.
Yeah, but how much is it?
The increase would be.
Do, do you know what, do you know what it would be?
The Lexington, how they're funded.
But do you know what that cost would be to the taxpayers?
Millions.
How many more millions? Okay. Thirty million dollars, okay?
Plus forty.
Yeah, so, so that's, that's why we don't do that, okay? I mean, we've looked at it. And again, the taxpayers would have to come up with the additional money by federal regulations to, um, fund it to that top level, so.
Mr. Chairman, can I interject just one second? I'm, I'm kind of getting, I'm getting feedback from Senator Jarvis now. This, this process of unwinding this piece, would it be, would it be beneficial if, if leadership from this board and, and myself have a conversation with him, because I don't know the ins and outs on his side of how to, of what that can be. I don't want to, I don't want to put words in his mouth and say that it's possible to rewrite the bill or rerad, I don't know. I don't know anything about that. Um, or change the bill, and I don't, was wondering if it would be better to have a conversation with him. And I obviously can't do it now, um, it'd have to be tomorrow.
Did you have something?
I was just going to add, I, I think here there, there should have, there would have been value in having that conversation sooner. I think based on, I'm not in Raleigh, I didn't write the laws, but I think because the money has already been appropriated, then we can't, you can't go back and say, well, just kind of give it to us. It'd be kind of nice if we could. I don't think state law allows that. I think it's if we don't go forward with it, then it just goes back to Raleigh.
It may go back to the state.
Correct.
Yeah, correct, right.
It's, yeah.
But I don't know the ins and outs of.
That's the parameters.
I don't know the ins and outs of the legislative side from his perspective on what it takes to make a bill change. I don't know enough about.
And that might not be a terrible idea if we're getting something that don't work.
And you can start fresh again if you.
Right. You know, because again, there's no need to, kind of like you said a while ago, spending eight thousand dollars and you got to spend it by the end of the day, you know? So if we're spending two million dollars on something that ain't going to give us the safety we need, then maybe it's best we do give it back. But it's their, you know, it's their decision to give it back and say, this don't work, or this is, you know, we'd rather sit down. And Mr. Jarvis, I don't, I don't mean any, uh, any ill will by anything at Davidson County when I say we got two other school systems. Again, I want all of our children to be safe and, you know, I get it. You know, you start having school systems compete against money and all, I hate all that, you know, I just don't, I don't like it.
Our teachers haven't had a raise in twenty years. You know?
I, I don't, I.
City teachers haven't had.
They have had a raise, okay? They hadn't had a supplement raise. Okay, and we're working on supplements now, okay? We, we are, so, you know, hopefully we'll get that. And again, like Mr. Kestner said a while ago, he don't know anything about the jail. He just come on here, so. Don't, don't blame him. You can probably blame the rest of us, but, you know, I don't want to spend eighty million dollars on the jail either, ninety million. Nobody does, you know? And I don't know what the cost is going to be now, but, you know, we got a lot of things we got to buy up here and everybody thinks we got an easy job. And we don't, you know, I mean, we got to decide what gets funded and what don't get funded and how, how to grow the county and how to keep our schools together, so, you know, again, uh, we want to work with you guys. Again, I'd love to get in a van, we got a van and ride to some schools and look at some, you know, I want to look at something before I buy it. If I spend two million bucks, I'm going to probably drive it, ride it, test it, see what it is. If I spend a million bucks, I'm going to do that. So, you know, and again, that's just what we do. And, you know, like I say, we ask a lot of questions, but we usually know what we're getting in the end of the day.
What's the timeline of it, Mr. Chairman? Do you know? What's the timeline of this?
Um, I think, I don't know, I don't know. The report's got to be back, from my understanding, before they go full fledged with this, y'all got to have a report back to them in a year, right? Before they, right, January twenty-sixth, I believe. So, you know, you got to get it implemented. I think it takes about three or four months to get it implemented. I seen the weeks on there, so. You're going to have about, you know, seven, eight months to trying to gather enough information to see whether you want this system or not. Like I say, I, I really hated that it's got pushed to the last minute, that a decision, I don't like making decisions. I'm just speaking on myself. Y'all making the decision, okay? Not me. You guys are making the decision. In a rush decision. Y'all got three brand new board members, I guess, or.
Mr. Chairman, it's January fifteenth of twenty twenty-six.
January fifteenth, yeah. So, uh.
Bless I am.
Anyhow, but if, if that's what needs to happen, unless we want to vote, we have a motion and a second on the table.
I went through my motion, Mr. Chairman.
I drew it, so I guess if, um, if we need to sit down with the delegation and look at it, um, so I think the school board has heard our concerns and our concerns of.
I mean, maybe that's the best path forward since of at least you, if you and I can have a conversation and, and vice chairman is, well, join us, you know, at least we'll know the mechanics of what can and can't be. I don't want to speak for somebody and say we can do this, we can't do that, because I don't.
I know the law cannot be changed until they have another session. So the law can be amended, like this one was amended, I guess. And, um, so it can be amended, I, I'm pretty sure they.
The, uh, we still got the issue with the MOU here if something were to move, if they're, if the school board's still planning to move forward Monday night, which I see the chairman back there shaking his head, no, so you're not planning on moving forward with your vote or? Yeah, is this, is this something you guys are still amenable to? If, because in other words, if you're going to move forward Monday night, at least we have that on our side as far as protection goes. So is that, are you, are you still amenable to this MOU? Are you guys still reviewing it?
So Casey, what I think what we'll do with the MOU is I think we're amenable to talk about it some more.
Right.
Flesh out some more details. We've talked with legal counsel, and so I think we need to have more dialogue about that.
Sure, sure. So remember from talking the other day, you know, you guys wanted it on the fast track. That's why I got you the draft quick as possible. So you, you take a look at it and you let us know if you're planning on, if you're planning on moving forward. I don't know if you are or you're not, is what I'm trying to say. But if you are going to go, we would prefer to at least at minimum, I guess, I don't want to speak for entire board, but have this MOU in place. As, as the protection end of this.
You're talking about if it, if it worked, the county wouldn't put no money into the safety system?
If, if the, if the, um, God bless Senator Jarvis, you know, he works his tail off, him and Larry and Sam get down there and get money. If they all get hit by a bus, something happens, the legislature changed, somebody mentioned that before, it re, this protects us from years from now. It's not the two-year piece within the window Mr. Kestner brought up that I'm worried about, it's beyond that. So this, I don't know where they're planning to go with this on Monday night is my point. And so if they are, at least this piece, if you guys are amenable to, you know, I guess we can make a statement.
We're going to make a MOU that we wouldn't pay the hundred thousand dollars to read up.
Correct. These, these costs that could be server replacements, any type of updates to the software later on down the road, if, if the state doesn't pick up the tab, because that's the plan, right? Is that the state will pick up the tab, but.
Did, did I hear clearly earlier that we're not paying for SROs, y'all are getting your own grant like that? We pay you nothing for that, for SROs?
Those, those dollars come to us, but it's all, that, that whole program's grant funded. Those are all grant funded.
That's what grant for, for school safety.
Right.
So as of right now, we're not putting nothing towards your safety, okay?
Not county dollars, correct.
Well, I wanted that to be clear, because I thought we were.
No county dollars for school safety, no.
Okay.
So what, what, all right, what's on the table? Casey, you recommended a discussion with Mr. Jarvis. But what about the school board? What about whether we're going to have a discussion, um, a group that works together? Um, I mean, we've got something like three ideas right here. And then they've given their information that they want to talk about the MOU a little bit more. So, I mean.
Some of those are unknowns. I don't know, you know, if they're, it depends, you got two different separate parties working in motion here. So, I mean, if we talk to Senator Jarvis about the mechanics of what can and can't be done with the funds, could, I think the chairman's right. You could go back and readjust the bill, but I don't, I think we owe it to have that conversation with him. Whatever comes out of that as far as an answer goes may dictate where the rest of this moves at this point. I don't know. So without having that talk, I don't know.
Well, but, go ahead.
I was just going to say, to her point, I think when you, when you have that talk with the chairman and the vice chairman and yourself, there should be delegation from the, the school board as well, since it's their grant.
Unless they're opposed, I don't have.
That would be my recommendation.
That's fine. We can hash out the MOU while we're at it. I mean, it's pretty simple and cut and dry, so.
That's what you, that's what you were saying.
Yeah, or, you know.
You know, and, and what Karen said a while ago makes a little bit of sense. We could go ahead and build a committee to look at this together and go, you know, guys, this is a good system or this ain't a good system. We don't want it. You know, and again, I'm telling y'all, to me, it's all about, let's make sure we get it right. If we're going to do something.
And it seems to me that that's the reason they're here.
You know, we can squabble over whose money this is or that money, but at the end of the day, we want to make sure we put the best system in, the school system, that we can do. We can all get in the bus and ride together. Uh, I'm driving. Um, I ain't riding nobody, you know? We can go look at these systems, we can look at two or three systems, we can come up with something that we all think, um, is a good system.
How are y'all, who determined, what, who's on that committee for you guys?
Well, we, we, we ain't formed a committee yet. That's, that's what we always do. Let, let me tell you how we do this, uh.
Have you formed one? Have you formed one? No, you have formed one, and we got a formed one, you got a formed one.
We got to work together.
Yes. So there ain't nothing to laugh about, Nick.
U- usually, like I say, when we built Oak Grove High School, Fred and them, they done all this before I got here, okay? They would form a committee.
You don't want that, Fred.
And, and they would be, you know, a couple from the board, uh, and again, if, if we're going to put, if we're going to do school safety, we got to do it, in my opinion, for every school in the county. Lexington, so we need one person or two from their school. One or two from your school, one or two from Thomasville, a couple commissioners. And we all get together and we look at the different quality of products, what may work. What works for one school might not work for another. You know, I just thought of that. Not every, not everything, uh, works. That's a good way for me to say that. What may work at, um, Oak Grove may not work in Thomasville.
A one size fits all.
There's not a one size fit all approach, you're right, so.
If we form this commu, committee together, right, and we identify something that works, are you guys committed to help fund that?
To fund a committee?
Fund, fund the security.
Based off of what we find, if we find something that we all collectively agree is a good thing, are you guys committed to help fund that?
Look here, we going to have to fund something, okay? We going to have to fund security in our schools. So, again, like I told you, I got a granddaughter, man. I don't want nothing to happen to her. You don't want nothing to happen to y'all's loved ones either. I get it, okay? So we're going to have to spend some tax dollars to make it happen. I'd like to have Mr. Jarvis's two million if we can. That would help. Because again, it's, it's coming out of taxpayers' dollars. Whatever we spend is coming out of taxpayers' dollars.
And it might not take a lot of money to implement, to add to this system, to get it to where everybody wants it.
Well, and it may not be, it may not be this system. It may be something totally different. Like I say, this system may work fine at Thomasville. And then another system worked good at Oak Grove. I don't know, but until we, I, I do know one thing. I got on the internet and done a lot of research. There's a whole lot of systems out there, you know? Everybody's trying a, a whole lot of different stuff, so, you know, um.
Mr. Chairman, just real quick, just for clarification. I know a lot of people seem to think that my idea of having the money come here was silly. But I think that's exactly the way we've been working our SROs. The money comes to us and then we give it to the school fund. So it's not that we can't be trusted. Whereas you've always got your money for your SROs, haven't you? I said you've always got your money for your SROs. And that, I, 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 what I, my point was this, when I made the suggestion of the money coming to us, and some people that seemed to look at that like it was ridiculous. But the money comes to us and we give it to y'all to pay your SROs. Have you ever missed a check? Just my point. It's not as ridiculous as people want to make it out to be.
How do you have to allocate funds to the school brand?
Well, you still get the money. It comes to us. It comes to us, right? And then we send it to you, right? And then we send it to you, right? And you never missed a check.
What's the convention of the suggestion that you guys get the money?
Well.
Well, that motion's been withdrawn, I don't think we need to ca, to keep carrying this on and on, I mean, we've already got a couple people here that.
But, but I will explain it to you a little bit, we are elected as a board to appropriate and spend tax dollars, uh, that's what people elect us for, okay? So we appropriate the money to the school board for different purposes, and then y'all spend it, so, the people really elect us to take care of the purse, uh, so that's what I was saying, send the money to us, we would look at the system, we would spend it, we would earmark it, just like we do our quarter cent sales tax for building schools, we would earmark it for security, and that's where the money would be spent. We're not trying to take your money, okay? What, the taxpayers' money, we're not trying to do that. We're just trying to say, let's all get together, we usually spend the money in the county, and we try to do so wisely, and, uh, so that's what we were saying, not taking anything away from you guys, but that's normally how it works.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I wanna say thank you for being the adults in the room here. Uh, the second thing I wanna say is thank you for thinking about this as a business decision, because what I find is that this is being thought of as a political decision, and it's very politically driven, not business-driven. Uh, the, the, the last thing I wanna say is that I can assure you, and I think all the parents and grandparents and aunts and uncles that are in this room right now, we can assure you that come February third, had this meeting not happened, had you not received this eight-page letter with the questions from the public to our vendors, to our board, to our board's attorney, that two-million-dollar-grant pilot project system would have been voted on, on, uh, February third and would have been approved. Because I can assure you, this Board of Education does not care very much about what the parents.
No, no, that's, that's, hang on, hang on, that's, that's, that's enough, stop, okay? It's all, that's enough, please stop. Jarvis, Jarvis, please, please. All right, thank y'all very much, we fixing to, um, we fixing to adjourn this meeting, I hope, thank, everyone, everybody gets real emotional with this subject, so, again, um, thank y'all for coming out, we will make a motion to adjourn.
No, no, sir.
Do we have a second?
No, sir.
Uh, we got a closed session, so, y'all don't be fighting out here while we gone, okay? Can I have a motion to get a closed session? Second?
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.